Here also via Zoom, is there anybody? Annie?
We do have Mayor Miles, several staff members, and Councilmember Nelson attending via Zoom.
Great, well, welcome to you ladies two online. I don't think without anything else, let's go ahead and get started. Turn it over to Manager Foggan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate that. Just some housekeeping rules, obviously. Everybody, I think, knows where the bathrooms are. We have goodies, please feel free to get up and move around. If you need to stand or get a treat, please do so. We actually, I think, should let everybody know that there's a Planning Commission meeting tonight at 5:00. So we're going to have a hard stop at 4:40 is the latest we can possibly go because we have to get this room set back up for Planning Commission. We, if we are unable to get through all the material, we're scheduled for a second phase of this meeting Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And so we're going to try to get, I know there's several that have already told me that they've got to leave a little bit early. We will do our best to get through as much information as we can in a pretty complex budget. But Tina, of course, and her team has done a great job in preparing this, so I think without further ado, we'll get started. So I just want to share with everybody the purpose of today's budget workshop. We want to share the budget that's been developed, the process. The, obviously, we want to show the budget highlights. We want to, we've summarized the operating budget recommendations, and we've got our five-year capital plan to show you. And then our final conversation is in regards to pavement preservation program and funding alternatives, something that when we started, part of our budget process is our meeting that we have with the council in January to talk about kind of what our revenue forecasts look like and some challenges. Obviously, we've been spending quite a bit of time over the last three, four years talking about pavement prez and pavement maintenance. And so we've got some information that we want to share with, with all of you with regards to what that could possibly look like moving forward for either this calendar year or the next calendar year. So we'll be talking about that. So the budget development process, so this feels a little bit like Christmas to us because we've been working on it for so long and we're finally, we can see the finish line. So this, we start this process in November. Work through, and you'll see that we, we did talk as a group with the council, Janu-, early January. And then our very important strategic planning meeting that we held March 24th. We are currently in our May process. And then the tentative budget will be adopted June 7th, and our final budget adopted June 21st. So there are some really important steps that we go through in developing the budget and some input that we absolutely look forward to and need. We conduct community citizen survey. We hold a city council strategic planning retreat. We basically align our capital improvement projects with those priorities that are set through those two activities. And then a big portion of what we do is that January meeting where we share our forecasts for revenues and fund balances. And then evaluate programs and services and the cost to provide them. So that's part of delivering services, working with the departments on what they want to do, what we're, what we need to stop, what we need to do better, what need, what we need to add. And then finally, to present a balanced budget, which we are presenting today. So just as a reminder, our strategic plan focus areas, we have six main areas in which we, we kind of put through all of the services and capital projects through to make sure that they align with the council's strategic plan. And that the six items are improved city services and livability, the modernization of our organization and our systems, economic prosperity, which is always a big one for the community, communication teamwork, our partnerships, and then, of course, culture, which really speaks to our internal workings. And we have a number of departments that we call internal services that are important in this budget as well. So for budget highlights. For the budget highlights, one of the things that we often talk about as we're developing the budget is what, what do we see as impacting us currently? And what do we see in the next fiscal year? And sometimes we're even, you know, when Tina's doing her forecast, she's looking at two and three years out and what are economists saying? So in the development of this budget for fiscal year '23, these are the top items that were main focuses in our economy for developing this budget. COVID fallout, we've, we've, I'll remind everybody that the revenue falloff has not been what we anticipated. And with federal funding, we've actually have a number of, of projects that we're able to do with one-time money, which was a surprise. And, you know, once in a while, you have those happy surprises. Of course, one of the big items that we worried about and we continue to watch is inflation. And you've heard a lot about inflation. Current estimates put us over 8%. And that inflation is impacting every, every possible section of the city organization, including and especially our employees and minimum wage, which we, which we'll be talking about and, and how that affects our personnel. Also, we're watching, of course, interest rates. Those are always important as we anticipate borrowing money over time. We're looking at job and wage growth. Job growth and wages seem to be going hand in hand right now. Low unemployment, but a lot of folks not even looking for work, which has been a big challenge. And then finally, of course, you've got the world events and the big wing, big one that's on everybody's mind is the Russia-Ukraine conflict and what's going to happen with that. So those are the economic indicators and items that we're, we've looked at to develop the budget. I don't think any of those will come as a surprise to anybody. So moving on, just looking at unemployment rates, we're at historic lows in unemployment. And as I mentioned, part of the conundrum there is that we know that there are people that just aren't looking for work or just have no desire to work. And that low unemployment rate is great. It looks great on paper, but what it doesn't equate to is filling positions. And so that continues to be a challenge for our organization as well as pretty much every business and industrial provider in our, in our area and across the country, so. But 3.5 unemployment rate is, is a great, is a great number. That's basically, is probably as low as you can possibly go with the way they calculate it. Again, inflation is something that we've been watching. Clearly, we're, we're curious about what happens to that over time and watching indicators to see if, in fact, 8.5 is going to come back down and make projects more affordable. And we will be talking about a couple of projects that have become, that we just can't afford and have become unbuildable because of the pricing. And we'll cover those, that, that list in the capital projects. Another good indicator of how busy and how the community's doing is residential, our single-family residential permits being issued. We continue to have a good solid increa-, or I want to say increase, but a good, solid, stable growth pattern. And so it looks like we will finish fiscal year '22 at 325, single-family building permits issued. And just being conservative as we like to be, we're, we're projecting about 300 for next year as well. So at this point, as we get into kind of the forecasting and revenues and expenditures, I want to turn the time over to Tina to, to cover this. She spends a huge amount of time with us and, and can speak to it a lot better than I can, so. Ms. Tina?
Thanks, Mr. Foggan. All right. So important policies that we look at when we're developing the budget, of course, are our working capital policies for enterprise funds and our fund balance policy that we talk about a lot when we're developing the general fund budget. And we know that our fund balance policy is a 25% to 50% of our operating expenditures and our outgoing transfers. And we maintain that higher level of 50%. And we have our working capital policy, which is anywhere from 45 to 180 days in our enterprise funds. Same concept. And, and, and we do that in our enterprise funds. And then, of course, we have our pension funding policy. And what a, what, what an amazing thing that we did this year when we issued that debt. But on top of that, just to stay on top of the unfunded liability, we also have adopted, or you have adopted, that we prepay all of our pension expenses, our PS/PRS expenses, so that they can get invested in the market and hopefully we get a better return. And, and, and that's something that has been, that, that we have incorporated into this budget as well. So looking at our revenue, so total revenues for the city for fiscal year '23 is $248.1 million. You'll see the breakout on the pie chart below. Our contributions are fairly large, but that's solely because of, we've got monies coming in from the Department of Justice to help pay for our draw site. We've got monies coming in from the state to help pay for Rancho Santa Fe. So a large portion of that is due to just those two contributions alone. The rest come from sales tax, state shared revenues, and then our charges for services, which make up the, the other large pieces of our revenue sources. So we talk about our TPT collections a lot and how important it is to fund our general fund services, our governmental services. And we know what happened during the pandemic and even what we're expecting in the out years, looking at other cities, looking at states, at, at the state. We know that our fiscal year '21 growth was amazing, almost 20%. In '22, we're also expecting a great incline of close to 12%. But what we're hearing from economists is that things will start to stabilize and thankfully, really, in the out years. And so we've projected about a 4% overall growth in our TPT collections in '23, and then the out years about the same. Our state share distributions, same sort of idea. You're going to notice that in fiscal year '23, there is a huge jump that the state share distributions are showing. We just received our estimates. So every year, we receive estimates from the state of what we're going to collect. Typically, we receive those in March and then we get our final figures in May. We just received our estimates in late April. And what it showed was that for some reason, the Mojave County City's vehicle license tax distribution was, is, is going to be almost 200% larger than what we have received historically. So normally about 3 million, and it's going to be over 7 million is what they're projecting. And so I, I question it, I'm not completely comfortable with it. And when we get the final state share distribution revenues in the next couple of weeks, we'll know better what that looks like. I still just question it and, you know, I'm not confident in that number. But that's what it's projecting right now. And so going out in the out years, I did decrease that number because again, I'm just not completely comfortable with that. But overall, the state is projecting increases across the board in all of their state shared distributions. So as far as the expenditure piece, our total appropriations for the city have increased from fiscal year '22 to $297.8 million. That takes into account everything that the city is spending on debt, operating budgets, capital budgets, and, and contingency monies. So operating budgets by fund are going to increase to about $78.5 million. You'll see the each funds, 2022 adopted budget, and then the recommended budget below. And you'll see that the, for the most part, across the board, and we'll get to, to what, to what, to what is comprised in those numbers. But we are recommending some personnel salary increases and COLA adjustments. And so they're, part of the increase is because of those, those figures. And then, Mr. Foggan, did you want to cover the outgoing transfers? Okay. So in the general fund, we have a large dollar amount of transfers, almost $30 million. And so it's important that we want to cover those with you today. In our grants fund, there's a small, there's a few that have small amounts in the grants fund. We've got some local matching that we need to cover for our fire department. And then in our benefits reserve fund, we have retiree expenses that we always need to contribute to. That's $200,000. Our transit fund, the general fund, always supplements it. The grant does not cover all of that. And so that'll equate to about $300,000 this year. The water operations fund, we send about $14,000 over to our utility billing department because they handle all of our business licensing. We've got some bed tax transfers. The I-11 East Cayman Connection Project Fund, that's where our Rancho Santa Fe project is housed. And so we're transferring another $3 million to that fund this year, just to reduce the debt that we need to borrow to finish that project. HERF, this is what we've talked about a few months ago when we did our recap and our look forward, that we, the general fund will contribute $5.5 million and has put that in the five-year forecast to contribute $5.5 million to the HERF fund. And then in our capital projects fund, you'll see a huge amount of money being transferred into our capital projects fund of $16.9 million. And when Mr. Foggan gets to the point of covering the capital projects, you'll see where those monies are going to. And then, of course, our public safety debt service of just over $2.6 million. And as I shared earlier, the fund balance policy is very important, and we try to maintain that 50% level. And so looking at our '22 estimates, we're going to be well above that. So that means that in fiscal year '23, we need to, we need to utilize those monies for some one-time expenditures, which we are doing and will level out at about 50% in '23. And you'll see what those out years look at, look like as well. Again, maintaining that high 40s to 50% fund balance policy. So the general fund isn't our only fund, and there are other important funds as well. HERF is one of those. We are expecting an increase in our highway user revenues as well as our restaurant and bar TPT. I shared that earlier. Our expenditures, we're, we're expecting to spend about $10 million in pavement preservation this year. Part of that is being carried over from this fiscal year. So we were going to recommend about $6.5 million. And Jack shared that we're going to need to roll over some of this year's. So it'll increase to about $10 million in '23. And we know that there's still a dedicated funding source needed for pavement preservation. In our water fund, we know that our, that our water fund is completely funded by its users. It doesn't take any revenues from our general fund to provide that service. Our revenues are expected to increase about 2.3%. Expenditures, we have continued to have operational increases over time, and that, of course, is due to system growth. However, we have not had a rate increase for many years. We've been able to use cash reserves to fund any of those operational increases. Well, we're no longer able to do that, and so we will be bringing a rate study to you this, this early fiscal year '23, and it is underway. And then we have capital renewal fees and capacity fees that are used to actually fund our projects, our big capital projects. Wastewater is, is a similar story as far as how it's funded. The users pay for the system. Revenues will increase about 2%. We are also seeing operational increases due to system growth. And it also has capital renewal fees and capacity fees that are used to fund the capital projects for the system. Our solid waste, it too is funded by the users, and the revenues are expected to increase about 0.8%. And the expenditures will also increase, and it is primary, primarily related to solid waste, truck replacements. And that was part of the rate increase that, that was approved last fiscal year, and so we'll continue to do that. And then we have our airport. Its revenues are also expected to increase slightly. Its expenditures have increased, but primarily in fiscal year '23, when we look at that, it's related to the draw site cleanup project. And you'll see that as we go through the operating budgets. And then we also have industrial park land sales there. And we are using those monies towards our grant matching requirements. And at the end of fiscal year '23, we're expected to still have about $1.4 million remaining in those proceeds that can continue to be used in the out years for grant matching.
All right. Thank you. The next section that we want to go through is just kind of the personnel summary of what, what we've been looking at and what this fiscal year coming up is going to look like. So as I mentioned, the increase in our minimum wage in the state is dramatically impacting us. It's actually forced us to reevaluate where people are on our pay scale and have to bump them up to accommodate the increase in minimum wage. So just overall, the average for, for most of the employees is going to be a 3% increase to their salary, starting in July. And then, as we've done, as we did in this current fiscal year, we have a cost of living increase. That's designed to keep us competitive in the market, and that will be 2.5%. We've talked to, we've done a lot of study in this area, trying to determine what other communities are doing, what they're looking at. It's actually interesting that there's communities that have not done cost of living increases in the past or now having to adopt them because of inflation and the minimum wage nipping at their heels, too. It's my understanding that even our next-door neighbor Bullhead, who is just going to do a cost of living increase, and they were trying to determine what that actually would look like for their, for their organization. So I think this is a good balance for our employees. The benefits are increasing, health benefits are increasing, albeit slightly, it is an increase. Our budget anticipates the city covering that for the employees, so the employees are still covering a portion of their benefits. I think it's competitive and reasonable. And, but this increase has, has been absorbed in our budget by the city. As I mentioned, the minimum wage has forced a number of changes within our rates, our, our pay structure. 67 employees actually affected by having to be reclassified or moved up in the system. So a personnel, yes, please, yes.
This is one of the items I had noted I'm concerned about because in Arizona now, January, or we find out a little bit before then, but what, what percentage minimum wage is going up? So it's really hard for the city to plan for that when, when it happens in January and our budget is now. So will you be able to continue to just reclassify employees year after year to try to stay ahead so that they, you don't have these compression issues? Or does the city need to look at a different way of, you know, setting up a pay scale so that you can stay on top of that?
So I would say that what we're currently doing, moving people up the scale, is keeping them well ahead of the minimum wage. And staying competitive in the market really depends on us doing cost of living adjustments to the, to their wages. The, the problem, maybe it's not a problem. The good news for us is that inflation and increase in minimum wage keeps sales tax moving up because they're raising prices.
Right.
Right? So rising prices means an increase in sales tax. It's not the best formula, but it's really what we do with cost of living to keep our, our wages and our classes within our pay scale competitive. So yeah, I mean, if we have cost of living increase year over year of, you know, 8%, it's not, you're not going to be able to do that. And there's no real protection. You, we will have to do what we, and we're doing this partially already within this budget, is market corrections of staying, and that's really the, the point, right? Is staying competitive within the, the market that we draw and attract employees from. And so, and you'll see in the human resource department that we're going to do a market wage study just to make sure that we're competitive. My commitment has been to look at that about every three years. We did one three years ago. We're going to propose to do one in fiscal '23 as well. But so it's a combination of always looking at the market, doing cost of living adjustments. I think that's how you stay competitive. Now, is that sustainable over time? I mean, as, as long as sales tax and state shared revenue continue to roll in, it is.
Right. It's another argument in favor of looking at.
A sustainable, yeah.
Revenue source. I know, I just learned today that Walmart's paying new employees $17 an hour. And when we talk about some of our minimum wage jobs, it isn't just about minimum wage going up, but also competing for a small pool of employees. It's really challenging. I worry about the city and how we're going to retain and attract employees.
Well, and that's something that we're constantly talking about, and I appreciate you bringing it up because it is, you know, obviously, what we offer, we talk a lot to our employees about total compensation, which is, yeah, you want to go work a part-time job and make $17 an hour? That sounds great. But you take, you take one of our $16.25 an hour full-time employees, and they're making way over $17 an hour for total compensation because, you know, we're doing, you know, state retirement. We're doing great, what I think are really great benefits for our employees, time off, you know, paid holidays. When my, you know, my employees are going to Walmart when those $17 an hour employees have to go to work, right? So I mean, it's, it's, there's, that, that's what we have to keep talking to our people about. And it's really about marketing our organization. And, and to be frank, it, it's about how, you know, do you enjoy working here as well? I mean, pay is a part of it, benefits are part of it. Do you enjoy your work is, is another big part of it. What culture are we offering?
I agree. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I had a question.
Yes.
I'm concerned about aging out and retiring. Do we know how much of the city employees we have that are close to retirement age? And what percentage we have after that?
Yeah, I don't know what the percentage is. We have a fairly good mix of employees. We have had retirements. We have, you know, in the next five years, we have a good number of leadership positions that could be open. But I think the good news for us is that we're taking the time to mentor and train the next leaders. So I haven't been overly worried about the age of our organization because we're doing the right thing to bring new people and put them in place. So I don't, you know, it's not something that we've, we're seeing the same, you know, what you talked about in other organizations where they have, you know, they have 10 major positions retiring and no hope of replacing them. That's not, that's not what we're seeing. Obviously, we have open positions that we're worried about. Not very many of those have been caused by retirement, though. It's just, they just haven't been able to fill them. So that's, that's really the worry is how do we, how do we fill open positions? But I think we've got a good mix of young people in our organization, mid-career. And yeah, no doubt, you know, I can, I know of three employees that will retire in this calendar year. So.
Well, I just want to make sure we have a good mix.
Yeah.
That's good. Because I mean, we can attract.
Yeah.
And if we have people retiring on the back end, our net is still, you know. So it's good to know we're diverse.
We're, I think we are. Yeah, I mean, we're welcoming a lot of, and even in our hiring, we're still getting a good mix. We're, you know, we're hiring highly qualified, great team players at all ages. And I think that is really beneficial to our organization. You know, I know that in the fire department is example. They are a very young department. Police department has a lot of young folks that they're going to have to mentor and train. And, but again, good mix of people that have just arrived, people that have been there eight years, people who've been there 15 years, some that have been plus 30. So. Yeah, good question. Okay. Anything else? All right. So the personnel summary, this really is an effort to try to kind of show you what's happening within, within the personnel system and with our employees. So we have, I think maybe the employer contribution or retirement contributions, probably a good, a good indicator of what our mix looks like. So the tier one employees have been here quite a while, right? Tier two and those kind of mid-career. And then tier three would be anybody from, when did tier three go into a place? 2017. So a good, a good mix within our retirement system. And so I think as far as the new positions that we're looking at, I think they're good adds to our organization. They're much needed. So I just will point out that building, the building maintenance position is a crew leader, something that we've been doing without our, the person that is running building maintenance has been basically doing two positions. So we're going to free up some of his time. In the general fund also, we've had a really big push on safety in our organization. And, and we only have one person, one and a half people, I guess, a full-time and a part-time position doing that. So we're recommending risk management. Get another full-time employee. There are two police positions, sergeant and a police officer. Parks is really needing another person. So we're recommending a groundskeeper for parks with the growth. All that growth's really great, but we've got more trash to pick up. So you'll see in solid waste, we're needing to add an equipment operator to pick up trash and add another area or another, what do they call those? District, city trash areas? Oh, yeah, that's right. A route, another trash route. And then for utility billing, we continue to be very busy. Ms. Tina, in her area, needs another customer service representative. So those are the, those are the new positions that we're recommending. Just wanted to cover with all of you, we just recently passed our development fees. Just wanted to give you a look at what fiscal '22 was, was looking like for a collection of development fees and what our projections are. We actually do have some projects that are going to receive some of this funding in this upcoming year. This was new revenue, something that we took on and the council passed in May of fiscal year '21. And they went into effect this fiscal year, October? October of this fiscal year. So we're doing well and look forward to a full year of collection of development fees. And like I said, we've got projects that are already speaking for some of this money. So. Keith, can you turn on your mic, please?
I hate to go back, but if we go back to personnel summary.
Sure.
Number four, new positions.
Yes.
Engineering, we don't have nothing there. Now, those positions are funded, just not filled. Is that why that's not here?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
These are brand new, these are brand new to the organization. All right. That takes us through the budget summary and development. Is any other questions before we move into operating budgets? You've been patient. I appreciate it. Let's take, take a quick three-minute break. If we can be back here at, let's say, 2:40, that would be great. I mean, 1:40, not 2:40, 1:40. So, thank you. I got to use. All right. Thank you for indulging me in a short break. I was drowning. All right. So now I'm going to just walk you through all of the department operating budgets, our recommendations. Again, love the conversation. If there's something you have a question about, please stop me. If, if I'm going past something and you have questions, wave me down. We can go back. I have no problem with that. Happy to do it. I will, the one thing that we didn't talk about, and I probably need to just insert a comment here, and that is that in this current fiscal year that we're operating under, are the number of supply chain issues that we've run into are staggering. I mean, shockingly, just things that you wouldn't think were issues. And it's affected our operating side of things. It's affected our capital project side of things. So some of these, some of these department numbers are a little bit higher than what they would normally be because we're having to push things into fiscal '23. So I just, I just want to let everybody know that supply chain continues to be and has been a real issue from everything from getting a scissor lift for the Parks Department to golf carts to asphalt to, you know, you name it, we've probably run into it, fleet. I know that vehicles being unavailable has really pinched a number of departments. And we've been scrambling to utilize older vehicles. And it's put a strain on fleet. And so there's just, it's just been kind of a domino effect on this supply chain issue. So, all right, let's start. So the first area of the budget we'll start with is, of course, this is your actual operating budget for the city council. This really is one, obviously, you guys don't spend a lot of money. And there's not a huge increase. And really, the only increase of note is that due to increase in what the stipend is for council members, we have a couple of position, council positions that now qualify for the new stipend that had been put in by the council. And that moved from $6,000 to $8,400 per year. The next budget is the city manager's budget. And I guess I'll just say, because it's throughout this entire operating budget, we've talked about it already, large number of the increase that you're going to see in all the budgets are the 3% increase in just wages and the 2.5% increase in cost of living for personnel. In my budget, I've included additional training for the senior leadership team and have added a program to recognize and do more recognition of city employees and their efforts. And so trying to do more of that, what we've talked about earlier, which is the, making sure that people are recognized and are enjoying their, their work here and that they're, that we're, we're taking the time and making the effort to keep them attractive to our organization. So other than that, not a lot of change in my, in my budget. In Carl's budget, there's really no changes other than what we've talked about with increases for personnel. In the city clerk's operating budget, the really, the big thing, and it's every two years, it looks like a huge increase, but it's really just kind of cyclical following the election process. It is Clerk Mayor, this department, who handles the elections and the cost of those. And so, of course, with our council election costs, there's that. And then Unisource Gas is going through their franchise process, which requires an election, them to be part of the general election. That is money that they will actually reimburse or pay for. If the city has any reason to be, another ballot measure to be on the, the general election, then we will split the cost of this with, with them. But right now, they've currently got the only thing on there. But that's the increase, that's the large increase that you see in Annie's budget. The court operating budget actually has nothing significant in it. It's pretty much business as usual there, other than the, they do have reclassifications in their department, four of them affected, they're affected by the minimum wage increase. So the four positions are being increased to stay ahead of the minimum wage. Economic development operating budget, so Gary's budget has a decrease in it, overall decrease of 11.8%. That really is that we had a grant administrator position that we had for last year. And when we kind of got looking at responsibilities and where that position would best be housed, it actually moved to the finance department. So we, that position is working out wonderfully. We've hired just an absolutely wonderful employee who's doing a great job. Her learning the position and getting up to speed has been phenomenal. And the impact that she's having is really making a difference for the city. We've, we've been able to utilize her with a number of departments that have had questions or needs for grant help. She's administering and helping with CDBG, which is huge as well. So I'm pretty excited about that position. But Gary's budget continues, I think, to answer the call on what we're expecting from economic development. And Tina's department is handling the grant side of it, which I think is actually a better, a better fit. So that's economic development. Tourism operating budget, tourism, they are, they have an increase, not, not a huge increase, but they do have a couple reclassifications. They do rely on part-time help quite a bit. And part of the increase that you're seeing for them is that they're, we're now in a position where we think that we need to be open seven days a week. You know, we've been a little bit sporadic and tourism has been unpredictable, but it's starting to feel a little bit more like the norm. And so Josh is trying to get the doors open on the visitor center seven days a week so that we're able to service and help more visitors. And it looks like, from the numbers, that we're seeing a really nice increase in tourism, which is, is wonderful because of course, our economy is partially based on that. So under their supplies and services, I think it's worth mentioning that we're doing, we're participating with the Arizona Office of Tourism. The Rural Marketing Cooperative has been really important to us. I think it's really kept our tourism bouncing back quicker than what they've seen in other areas of the state and of this, really of our region. There's also, you know, we're, we've got a person who's just dynamite in selling, finding just great product to have in our tourism shop, our gift shop. And so we're seeing an increase in the inventory. We're doing a lot of local sourcing of product. If you haven't been down there, check it out. It's. a lot of local sourcing of product. If you haven't been down there, check it out. It's really great product that, that they've been able to add. I was planning on talking about the capital outlay, at least the five-year capital outlay for the powerhouse, but I'll just stop here and just say that the remodeling of the mezzanine and the, the improvements to the powerhouse that we have envisioned for this next fiscal year will improve the meeting space and the upstairs, giving people more of a reason to stop and stay longer. Obviously, the Tesla charging stations are an advantage for us, and we're trying to give people an extra reason to walk in the doors of the powerhouse. So I think the work that we're doing with, with the powerhouse this next fiscal year is just gonna make it even that much better. You know, the dog run and having a place for people to be able to stop pets or traveling with people, and having that as an, as an item is, is a huge amenity as well. So engineering, so the engineering department, they have eight position reclassifications. A big portion of what you will see we're, we're doing with engineering, Councilor Walker had asked about positions. So what we've done with the fiscal 23 budget is we've basically taken the Assistant City Engineer position, made it two positions, and reclassified them as engineers. And we've also had or implemented an intern program, and one of those interns is graduating from the NAU, and will start with us full-time in the next month, which we're really excited about. We've also identified another intern. I believe that intern is also going to NAU, and so, and will graduate in December. So we will actually have two brand-new engineers that we will be able to train, teach, and mentor to be our next leadership group, which we're really excited about. Very, I think Phil, in sitting back with his team and talking about a direction, as you know, we've been able to find a seasoned or a person that was qualified to be the Assistant City Engineer. And in kind of looking at best practices, looking what's happening with engineering firms, is that they're really looking at these young people, teaching them the trade, using their expertise, it's fresh coming out of school, and then training them to be the next group of leaders. So it, I think that is a great solution. The internship program is working. We were able to get some really good work out of the individual that will start with us full-time. And the intern position that we've identified, I know Phil and his team are working to kind of figure out what projects they can filter to this person, so that when they graduate, they're up to speed and ready to be full-time with us as well. So there's, there's, I think those positions have been really great. We were just able, Phil just hired, filled a G I, a very important GIS position with a young person that is enthusiastic. We're excited about having her join the team, and we're in the process of, I think, finalizing his front desk help, another administrative assistant that we've been short. The other thing that you will see in Phil's budget is you'll see in supplies and services a pretty big number. And part of trying to answer the question about workload and about review time and process, we're actually basically going to use a third-party engineering firm to do more of what we've started this year, which is plan review, but we're also gonna expand that to project review, so that, you know, we're not having projects that are, you know, Phil and Eric have to come in on the weekends and work on, or late at night. This, this will actually allow him to get his engineers up to speed. The work will get done, and, you know, eventually, we will see that third-party engineering contribution to what we're doing go down. But for the next couple of years, I think you can expect to see that number continue to be a little bit higher than what we would like it to be as we get our engineering team back up to speed. But a lot of thought and effort has gone into the engineering department and what they're doing. And, and I, like I said, I think we're attracting young people, which is exciting. And that, those, those people will be our next leaders. They will be the Assistant City Engineers. They will be, you know, our hope is that they're quality people that are gonna be our next city engineer over time. So that is what we're doing with engineering. So. Ms. Tina, so in the Financial Services operating budget, we don't really have a lot of, of change. We do have reclassification of three positions. And then her large, it looks like a large increase. We've covered it. The grants administrator position moved into her budget. And other than that, no changes. Utility billing, also something that Ms. Tina oversees. Again, four positions being reclassified. And then we are recommending, as I mentioned earlier, that one Customer Service Representative addition. They, right now, are pretty strained when someone is sick or needs time off. We, it's not unusual to have just one customer service rep at the counter. We have, we have wonderful, very talented, customer service-oriented people working the front counter, and they do a great job. But when you've, when you've got four or five people stacked up, you gotta, gotta be able to, to help those folks in a little bit more timely fashion. So that's, that's utility billing. There is, you know, we are pushing for more people to pay their bills online. Tina and her team have done, I think, a great job in researching. The current system that we have for people to pay their online utility bills is pretty clunky, definitely not user-friendly. And so Tina and her team have identified a new system that we think will, well, we know it'll be easier, and it looks great, and we think that people will, will be happy to transition to that. And so we're expecting more people to sign up and do their utility bill payment online. And so we're, we're gonna see an increase in merchant card fees, of course, because the only way to pay online is with your credit card or your debit card. So that is her budget. Fire admin, really no changes to, to what's happening, no dramatic changes anyway, to what's happening in their, in their area. They, they are, of course, qualify for the 3% and the 2.5% cost of living. There's an additional firefighter that was created by eliminating a Building and Life Safety Inspector in July of 2021 that will be taken care of. That is not a new position, though. So, but that, we're, we are juggling some, some different assignments that people have, have taken on. And then the capital, the, the only real, the capital lease is the big one that you see, and that's just a vehicle being replaced as part of our, our capital lease program. Community Development operating budget, this budget saw a really small increase, really nothing of anything significant happening or changing in this department. They are, of course, trying to replace two vehicles. We'll see how successful they are with the supply chain issue. And then they, that, that switch in the personnel is the elimination of one Building and Life Safety Inspector that added one firefighter. So that's the, that's the swap I referred to earlier. The dispatch operating budget has a pretty substantial decrease. That, really, that decrease has to do with the purchase of some really important software for last year. So their, their budget's kind of returning a little bit back to normal. They do have a pretty sizable increase in their, their maintenance for the new system that they have. But the Motorola CAD system seems to be working its magic the way it was expected to. I think the reports that I've received is that the dispatchers are enjoying it, and it's working for our public safety people. So a pretty, pretty expensive system, but it's been worth, it's been worth its weight in, in our ability to report and to dispatch. So I'm pretty happy with what's happening within the dispatch center. They are, we are going to do, put in another additional workstation and training station. That seems to be the pinch point for them, is they're, they're trying to bring people up to speed and still answer calls, and doing it on equipment that they still, that they have, and there's operational. So the capital outlay with an additional workstation and training station will be pretty important to them for this next year. HR, we've talked about their new position. They have a part-time position that will be reclassified as a full-time, sorry, wrong. They have a reclass of one position. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself two different departments, or two different divisions in the department. So they have a reclass of one position, and they're asking to start an intern program, which we've been preaching to the departments. You'll see a number, a, a number of intern positions that are referred to in the, in the budget, the, of course, engineering, HR, and I'll point out a couple others as well. We think this is actually a great way to grow our own again through conversations with our partners, both at the college and at the county. We, we've had internship programs in the past that have resulted in really great part-time, or full-time employees for other people. And so we, again, trying to grow our own seems to be the right way to, to go in what people are doing. So that's something we're gonna be, you're gonna be seeing, I think, more often in departments. And then we're actually going to see an increase in their, in HR, in the efforts that they're making for background, doing backgrounds. And also, we're gonna continue to push our, our customer service training, something that we've offered every year. And then the, I think I've already referred to this, but we're going to do a hiring compensation study again. And to make sure that we're competitive in the market, we're also gonna be looking at, you know, is our compensation program working for the employees? Are we following best practices still? The world has, you know, every, it seems like the world's changing every day, but over the last three years, are we still, you know, is our system still working? Did, does it need to change? Is, you know, so we'll be looking at that. So HR will be heading that up as they, as they usually do, and interested to see the outcome on that. So that's how we're gonna stay current with our market. All right. Now we can talk about risk management. So risk management is reclassing a position, and they're, they're basically adding a safety and risk technician position and eliminating a part-time position. We really need more help in promoting and, and improving our safety programs. We've made huge strides over the last four years in safety in this organization that is saving our organization thousands and thousands of dollars. In order to continue that, though, we can't do that with one, really one full-time position. So we're adding this position, and our expectation is that we're gonna, our safety programs are gonna get even that much better. As far as the rest of the risk management's budget, we're adding nicotine testing program. We're also looking for additional safety training and materials that we've been able to implement. Some of them, would like to do more. And then we're, I've, I personally want to recognize, and I know that Krista and, and her team wanna help recognize safety. And so in order to send the message that we care about safety, we're, we're doing a safety recognition program that I think will have long-lasting benefits to our organization. And frankly, I want everybody to get home to their families with good knees, good backs, and in some cases, with their lives. So.
Ron?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, please.
Is that something new that corporations are, I mean, organizations are doing, adding a nicotine testing program? And that says public safety. So is that just for police officers and fire department, or is that across the board for all city?
So that's actually in the fire department.
Okay.
As part of the cancer reduction and the pressure that's been put on fire departments, and frankly municipalities, what's been happening in the industry and within the state legislature has been a suggestion that any firefighter that is diagnosed with cancer up to a certain age, the city is responsible to cover the cost of that. Now, that legislation hasn't been fully implemented, but in anticipation of, anticipation of some kind of that piece of legislation being passed, this has been something that we've been talking about for some time, is that if the city's ultimately responsible for any kind of cancer that a firefighter gets, then we've gotta make sure that people are not giving themselves, you know, unfair.
They're not adding to their risk.
Right, they're not adding to the risk, right. So that's, that's where that really has come from. I know that we've had a, the, the fire department has been talking about this now for, gee, two, three years. This is not a new concept, but the testing is, is new.
I can see where that would spread to all organization.
Yeah, we haven't, you know, I think it really won't go into the organization. I think the, the way that that would be handled throughout the rest of the organization is through the benefit package, where it would, it could possibly cost more for some, somebody who wants to.
Who chooses to partake.
But that's, the Health Trust Board has talked about that on and off, but, and there's been a couple of trustees who really like that concept, but it hasn't, that has not been implemented yet. But that's how you would, that's how that would be tackled.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Our IT department, IT doesn't really have anything of note. There actually is a decrease in IT. Just point out that we had a fairly large increase in IT because of February 26th of 2021. Those, all of that has been corrected. The systems have been put in place. We spent the money that needed to be spent. We're still spending the money that needs to be spent to stay safe. We've just found a cheaper way to do that. And so we're, we're seeing a reduction in their, in pretty much what they're doing on the capital outlay side is, is a, is a big part of the savings, because we've done what we needed to do to catch up and, and be current. So really, actually very proud of the ID, IT department and their efforts to have a system that is reliable. They got us up extremely fast in 2021, and Jerry has, has carried the department forward in, really with the mindset that attacks are happening every minute. And, and I, I think we've, we've got a good monitoring system now that's affordable, and it's doing just an absolutely fantastic job. If you checked your emails, you, you see this, the, the efforts that part of that's doing is looking to stop people from clicking on the right, wrong stuff. And, and it's helping us build awareness, and that's really was the point of, of, of that. Not to try to catch anybody clicking, but to, just to build awareness. So. Not to try to catch anybody clicking, but to, just to build awareness, so. Uh, recreation operating budget, so um really not many changes. Uh, they're going to continue to do their programs and offer uh livability improvements where they can. Their budget's pretty much uh break even this year. Pool operations, same basic thing. We, we're of course in these departments where we have a lot of full, our part-time employees. Are, we've, we're gonna be impacted by um the minimum wage. They have a couple of um positions that are gonna be reclassified in the pool area. Uh, other than that, it's uh pretty much business as usual, swimming and fun. Uh, golf course, uh, so the golf course is, of course, we have a number of, again, part-time employees. There's seven reclass positions. Um, and we're looking at adding additional part-time groundskeepers to, to handle time off and, and maybe offer a program where we introduce people to the, to part-time and what it's like to be a groundskeeper. And then those people hopefully become full-time uh over, over time. Of course, the minimum wage impacts a number of employees. They um, their supplies and services um are up. The, we've really, I think, done a, a good job of kind of coming out of the pandemic, getting ready to have a pro shop with a little more inventory. The restaurant uh portion of the business is doing well and we're marketing that. But of course, with an increase in number of people using it, we're gonna see an increased number of people or cost to serve those people. And then um, I guess no one should be surprised that fertilizers costing more, so. Um, other than that, that's kind of the golf course. Uh, parks operating budget, parks uh has a fourteen-point-five percent increase from twenty-twenty-two. Um, they have fourteen positions that are being reclassed. And then, as I mentioned earlier, they have a groundskeeper position that we're recommending uh just based on the, the acreage and everything that they're being asked to take care of. Um, of course, they have part-time employees as well and the minimum wage increase is affecting them uh with their part-time employees. They're um, they're going to, one of the, one of the pieces um that we've been talking about with council and one of the things that I, that Mike's been looking at is tree care. And so we are basically designating some operating budget to hire professional tree services. We've been, you know, I have to give kudos to Mike and his team. They do a pretty good job of taking care of dead limbs here and there, but uh a more robust tree care uh program is something that he, that Mike wanted to implement into his budget. And so we're gonna do that with um a, an outside tree service.
Ron, will that include um funds to replace all of these dying trees that we have in the parks?
So we, sorry, we replace trees as needed. And so if, when tree, when a tree comes out, a tree goes in. And um, so that's been what um, I, I think that's kind of been a tradition for the parks department for a long time. I know Mike and I've talked about making sure that when, when a street tree comes out or when a park tree comes out, that new ones go in. Matter of fact, at the Arbor Door, at the Arbor Day event, we planted, what, four or five new trees at Cecil Davis Park. I drove by there over the weekend, actually. Those trees are looking great, they're gonna be a nice addition. And that's, and we, we, the other great thing is we have people that are, that seem to be willing to donate trees on a pretty regular basis. Um, so yeah, we're always looking to take out trees that have aged out and put something back in their place or next to where they were so that we maintain, of course, we wanna maintain our Tree City status anyway. Um, but yeah, that's, that will definitely continue to be an ongoing program that we have. It's a great question. But yeah, we're, we're, I think, you know, taking the pressure off of Mike's people to try to take care of trees is gonna be important and having people trim trees that know trees are gonna be beneficial to our trees as well. So I think it's gonna be a good program. We're gonna monitor it this first year, see how it goes. Uh, we put, uh, how much money do we put towards that? Eighty, eighty thousand dollars towards that. We'll monitor that, we'll see how much we get done and next year we'll see if it needs to be increased or if that was enough, so. Uh, was there that? Oh, capital outlay, yeah. So I'm, we've got um, we've got a number of capital um outlay projects. Uh, we'll talk about some of them in the five-year capital plan. Uh, it's pretty typical stuff that you'd see from the, the parks department with mowers and trailers to carry, you know, to put the mowers on, that kind of thing. The uh one I do wanna point out is the um, the trail and dog park improvements on Railroad Street. Um, we have three fantastic dog parks in our community that we're fortunate to have. Um, but the feeling is that we need an, we need another, at least another one. And so this railroad street property seems to be an ideal place to take a dog for a walk. It offers a pretty robust trail system as part of it. And over time, we would love to see this, this little piece that we own become uh more used because now it just currently sits basically fenced off. And um, I think we've got a great opportunity and this is, I'll just call it phase one of the improvements to this property. And what it ultimately becomes, I'm not exactly sure, uh but the first one will be kind of a walking area and a dog park, so. All right, uh, police operating budget, so we have four positions that are being reclassified um in uh the police department. We have, and then we're uh asking, or we've put in uh two uh full-time positions, professional standard sergeant. Um, you'll recall that we became a certified police department um in twenty-twenty, twenty, is that right? Twenty-twenty? Twenty-nineteen, end of twenty-nineteen. Um, and so as part of that, keeping that is extremely important. It really ma, has made a difference in our police department. Um, but the sergeant position has been missing since we actually became accredited. We knew it was missing and uh this year uh we're proposing to finally fill that position. The other uh, uh position, of course, is a police officer position. We haven't added a new position in uh several years as we're growing. We're, you probably expect to see additional positions um coming up, so.
Since you bring that up, I had, I had that on my list. Um, you know, I always worry that we aren't allocating enough to the police department. Um, and with all of our growth that we're seeing and we know will keep coming, you know, I worry that we don't have enough officers and that we're gonna need to be planning for more and how are we going to find them?
Yeah, that's the, that's the most important part, how are we gonna find them?
The, um, you know, and I was surprised, well, I wasn't surprised, but um I was glad to hear the fire department has a line of people waiting basically to get a position and that's through their academy and through the high school. And I wonder if we can't do something similar with the police department where um kids in high school, you know, through their um their junior police officer, if they couldn't have a class and then maybe some type of position until they turn twenty-one to become police officers. But um, you know, I really, I would like to make sure that, that we're really planning to have more because what we're seeing is all, all this violent crime that we didn't see before. Um, some major incident, incidences at our high schools, uh, those kind of things are, are worrisome. And tha, and that's what I'm hearing from the public is we're worried about the safety of our city and we're worried about the blight. You know, that's another part of the police department. So um, I'm glad to see one officer being added here, but um, you know, I'd like to see more competitive pay in order to retain our officers and, and then a plan for the future, especially with all the homes that are being built.
Yeah, no, and, and one of the things, so just really quick to, to really address grow your own. I think that's a philosophy that we've, in the organization, we believe in. And I know um that, you know, Chief Cooper is, I would be more than happy to talk about kind of grow your own and, and the effort and what we're looking at there, cause we wanna, we, we absolutely wanna have a bar and we wanna hire people that are, that are, have a high bar for them, right? And, and the other piece is, again, I'll just back to wages and, and that kind of thing. Being competitive in the market is what we're absolutely dedicated to. And part of why we need to continue to look at, you know, our, you know, the pay system and what we're paying within that system is extremely important. Again, I, I, I feel like I'm always saying, at least I've been saying this for the last couple of years, that our, we've got a large number of police organizations in our community. And one of them is DPS and we just cannot compete with DPS that seem to have endless funds to pay people endless amounts of money. And um, it's just different kind of work. But that's, again, the, the effort that Chief Cooper and his leadership team are doing to attract people. We're actually, I, I'm, I'm really pleased with the fact that we've been able to attract lateral officers, something that we have not been able to do in the past. Um, which means we are staying competitive and um we hope to continue to get more interest in moving to a small community where, how do you put it? Move to a small community and make a big impact, you know, make a difference. Um, but the grow your own philosophy really, I mean, that is, that has huge ramifications. We're seeing success, like you said, in the fire department. We think we'll see success in the police department. We've, we have had individuals that have gone through the junior uh police program and have come to work for us. Um, uh, maybe not as police officers, but, but with, you know, with the interest of working in the police department. So yeah, I, I totally agree. One of the challenges that I've put out to all the departments, including um Chief Cooper, is that we, we've gotta have and show you performance measurements. We've gotta show you, here's, here's our, here's benchmarking, here's where we are. We need two more people or we need another person or we don't need anybody because we can't guess at what we need. We need, really need to have the data show us. And so that's something that the department heads are working on so that we can stand up and say, yeah, absolutely. We're, you know, this sergeant position is critical. These patrol positions, this detective position, whatever it may be, is justified and this is what it accomplishes. So, but yeah, you totally hit what we're, we're talking about on a regular basis.
When you do the wage survey, um, will that include like Bullhead and the sheriff's office? Because those are such, that's such an easy jump.
Yeah, well, we're.
You can work in Bullhead and live here and then the sheriffs obviously are here.
We have to compare, so we have to compare to like-size communities, right? We, we're, Bullhead is a little bit of a reach, but we always look at what they're doing. Havasu's even a farther reach. We look at what they're doing, but that generally isn't part of our comparison. And if it is, we have to put in a big cost of living difference to see how that works out. Um, the sheriff's uh office is, we, we're, we're looking at what they're doing. Um, the work's a little bit different than s, than municipal policing, but of course, we, we look at, we look at what they're, they're paying. I think the, the kind of the good news is, I mean, you look at the number of officers we've lost to other agencies. We haven't lost o, officers to our neighbors. We've lost officers to DPS. Um, again, not being able to compete with what their state is paying their people. Um, it's, that's, that's a challenge, but again, it's way different work. And we've, we've gotta show people why they wanna work in municipal policing rather than highway patrol or county work, right? And so, I mean, we, we have some work to do to market ourselves to the, to those that are looking to be police officers too. But again, when you grow your own, part of that is, is taken care of. Um, and being, if you can be competitive in the market, then it's, do we have a better organization? We have a better organization. I'll put my police department up against Bullhead any day or Havasu or the, or the sheriff's office, so. I mean, we've got great leadership, we've got, we're accredited, where a lot of other communities around us are not. And they're looking, you know, and officers wanna work where you can count on policies to protect them and they know what they're being asked to do. So there's a lot to, to what leadership's been doing to try to attract and keep their personnel as well, so.
I, I agree, I mean, um, of course, our police department is better than those other ones. I just wanna make sure that we're paying our guys a wage so that they stay with us. And so we don't have that turnover and that we're also hiring enough people to stay with the growth and to keep crime down and to stay on top of the blighted properties and, and that kind of thing. It, it is a real concern for the community, especially, you know, there was a week there where we just saw one crazy event after another and it's kind of a wake-up call. We wanna make sure that our ne, that our neighborhoods are safe, but also that our officers are safe, they have backup.
Yeah, yeah, well, there's, there's been a number of happenings. I'm kind of grateful that the happenings have been, we've been support to those happenings. But again, it's, it's, yeah, absolutely, so.
Question, Ron.
Sure.
Um, Jamie mentioned, thanks for bringing that up as far as the fire department and, you know, the classes that are offered at the high school and of course, fire academies. Um, I know for a while, of course, now post-pandemic, I've seen them active again and that's the police explorers or police, junior police?
Junior police, uh-huh. I think they, it's the explorer program, right?
Junior Police Academy.
Junior Police Academy, it's a one-time thing in the summer.
Thank you. Have we ever, I know as far as the fire department, we've seen um students graduate from that and join our department. Have we seen anybody from the police? Um, you know, these, these, uh, these offerings to the youth and then they progress forward and graduate and become police officers?
Uh, like I said, we've had people go through the program and I know of one individual who started out with the idea of being a police officer and ended up being a support, civilian support within the police department. Um, so there's definitely room to grow the program. And, you know, one of the things that's, that's kind of helped the fire department and is the MCC program. And what ultimately that ends up looking like for the police department is, I think, um.
The difference that we have is from graduation to twenty-one, that's a long time for that age group. Uh, fire department's able to get them onboard and they can start working at eighteen or nineteen. That makes it very, I'll say, convenient. So we don't currently have something. Some years ago, we had a cadet program, it was a part-time thing that we have considered and that's something we'll look at next year as well. But it's to develop these young people.
And that's a state code anyway, isn't it? Uh, police, uh, a peace officer has to be twenty-one?
Correct, in Arizona.
Correct, okay, thanks.
Well, and I would say that part of our code services program has been successful in attracting and giving people that that window that they need to make money and still keep police profession as a career goal. Uh, obviously, w, we need good people in our code services, so we're not looking for that to be our leapfrog into policing. But it, that has been a, you know, that has been a mechanism that has been successful for some individuals, so. Um, but we've, we've got full, uh, four uh full-time code services officers that really are doing great work in our community. And um, and Counselor Staley, you're absolutely right about, as the community grows, you know, we've got four uh areas of responsibility for four employees and that, how. And that, how far out are we from needing a fifth for, to carry a fifth area? So, those are things that, that the police department will definitely be looking at over the next year, so. Good questions, thank you. All right, streets. So, the Streets Administration's operating budget is, reflects a 10% increase from 2021, I should say, 2022. And then they have two reclassifications in there. And then, this is another department that's looking at a JTED internship program and the effort to try to attract and, and make sure that people get an opportunity to be exposed to the public work side of things. Really happy that Jack and Rob have looked into this program. I think it will be effective for them. Again, grow your own, let people, you know, there's a lot of kids that don't think of the city when they're looking or coming out of high school. So, this internship program certainly will do that for us. They were, they're, actually, part of the issues that they're having is a little bit of growth in their building. And so, they're, they're needing to, to do some additional offices and, and change out some really old furniture. And then, they're also looking at hiring just as temporary labor to do special projects and take on some additional activities that we're currently using full-time employees for. And then, really not too much other change in the admin side of the streets. We'll talk about the, the other side of that, which is the operations side of it, which is a, a, a big change, that Tina's already kind of alluded to. There's three reclass positions, and again, another internship program participant in this section of the operating budget. The, we have, as you know, we've been working on some studies. We're doing the, the master plan for, for roads right now. And we're going to be looking at traffic-related issues as well, traffic flow. You know, where are, where are sticking points? I think this is something that we always have gotta kinda stay current on anyway. And then Tina's already alluded to this. This is part of the supply chain issue that we've run into. And that is, the pavement pres is gonna be 10 million. And that's, 3.6 million of that is carryover for work that we just couldn't get done this year. And so, we're, we're looking forward to having this work done. I will point out that this work is all scheduled for collector and arterial, arterial roads. And of course, those are the roads that mean everything to our economic development vitality. Getting people to our businesses, getting shipping and trucking to the right places. And then, on their capital outlay side, they've got some, some pretty important pieces of equipment they'll be adding this next year. There'll be a rubber tire loader that's gonna be pretty important, a street sweeper. And then they've got some traffic signal replacements and upgrades that are absolutely, we've gotta, we've gotta get into place if we hope, if we hope to make improvements on our moving and addressing traffic-related issues. So, that is the Streets operating budget. We will be talking some more about street funding in just a minute. But that's currently what we have for fiscal year '23.
Now wait, you're not gonna talk about snow equipment?
Yeah, we need a little bit of snow equipment, but it's not, not the best time to talk about it. Yeah, when, so in our, you bring up a good point, you know, when you need it, you need it. And we've had a couple of instances where we've really had people stuck on like Route 66, where we just didn't have the proper equipment. So, we are proposing to have some snow equipment. And I'm not wishing it on us, but I hope we get to use it, because it means we've got some water, so. All right. The transit budget, really not, really too much change in transit. We have a reclass. And other than that, really no significant changes to what they're, that they're, really what they're doing operationally. So, the trans, the transit operating expenditure budget is the same. We really have, the big thing is the reclassification of nine positions. Again, staying ahead of the increase in the minimum wage. And then, we're replacing one bus this year. Tina pointed out that a portion, a good portion of this budget is covered by grants. And the cart buses are part of that program. And we're grateful to always have nice, well-running buses as part of our cart system. And I, we really do, for a community our size, I think I've mentioned this before, but it's worth mentioning again. For a community our size, having this cart bus program in a community of 33,000 people is a huge blessing to people who need public transportation. And so, just really grateful that we're able to fund it, and there's grant money that's helping us. Water operating budget. So, the water operating budget doesn't have a huge amount of changes. There are a large number of position reclassifications. This is in our public works departments. We've noticed to, again, back to that, stay competitive conversation that, that we really, it's, it's really required us to take a look at what we're asking people to do. You know, CDL, carrying a CDL has become more and more difficult, and it is extremely difficult today. Matter of fact, there's some people that are choosing to go and do other work than get CDLs, because it's, it's, it's become so tough to get and keep it. So, it's, it's been hard to attract people and have them want to be CDL operators, because it's, it's become pretty onerous. Anyway, so we have those reclassifications. We're also looking at a number of projects in their, just in their supplies and services that we're looking at hiring a consultant for electrical safety biological services, just in an effort to try to make the system more effective and efficient and to make sure that we, we're supplying the cleanest water possible. We're also looking to hire and do a study on, on water conservation and sustainability. Recall that we've put a plan into place. Now, we're going to basically look at how, what, what are the best options that we can do to save the most amount of water? And so, we're, we're gonna look at how, you know, how well is the recharge working? How well are we doing operationally to save water? And then, they, one of the things that we're really running into is the need to take care of weeds around our facilities. And using and dedicating full-time employees is probably not the best use of their time. And so, I know that Kealan and Rob have been looking at a temporary labor program that will let them worry about the water system and have a third party or at least a, a outside labor force take care of weeds around their systems. And then, a little bit of help clerically as well. And then, the final thing is, we're just seeing, we're gonna, we're getting ready to bring in well 10. We're just gonna see a, a cost increase for bringing that online. More, more power being used. Let's see, what else on water? Capital outlay on water, there's some more expensive stuff. These pressure-reducing valves are pretty expensive. Again, I talked a little bit earlier about the building issues that we're having at Public Works and, and making the space more usable. So, there's a remodel, a little remodel proposed as part of, of their budget as well. And then, we're still trying to get that hydro vac truck that was supposed to be delivered this fiscal year. It's not gonna, it's certainly not gonna be here until fiscal year '23, so. Wastewater operating budget. So, they're gonna re, only need to reclass one position in their budget. The, their large increase is really in capital outlay. Again, they've, they're participating in the remodel of Public Works area. They've got some, some equipment that they need. I think probably one of the more important things that they're working on is the SCADA equipment upgrade. The current system that we have is not supported anymore. And so, in order to get technical support and help on making sure that the sewer plants stay up and operational, I think we'd all agree that that's important. And to be able to monitor that from a remote site instead of being right at the, at the plant is the SCADA system that allows us to mon, do that monitoring off-site. Solid waste. So, our solid waste is seeing a pretty significant increase, 17.6%. We've, we have 16 positions that are being reclassed, which is pretty much all of them, actually. And then adding another driver to be able to take on another route. Again, that continues to be really important. We're anticipating a landfill, a tipping fee increase at the county landfill. And then, we're also needing some more containers. The containers are fairly expensive these days. And then, we're also gonna have some capital outlay. And they're also gonna contribute money to improving space out at the Public Works area. And again, that, that was supposed to be done in fiscal '22. It's now scheduled for fiscal '23. Our operating budget for the airport is, you're seeing a very large increase in the operating budget for the airport. We have two reclassifications for employees. And really, I think a majority of this has to do with the Dross cleanup. And then, we also have some pretty important capital projects that need to happen for the terminal building. We, we, we remodeled it. But in the remodeling, there was a couple of things that we knew we weren't gonna be able to get to in, in the first phase. The terminal air conditioning units just absolutely gotta be tackled. And the restrooms just need to be updated, something fierce, because our effort to make the building feel like the 1940s, the bathroom shouldn't look like that, so. So, yeah, they, they are original, and we don't want that, so. And then, of course, probably the biggest ticket item on here is the upgrade to airfield lighting, which is desperately needed. And is, is something that we've seen coming for a couple of years now. So, in 2023, we are gonna tackle airfield lighting, which is gonna be important for safety for our airplanes. Fleet Services, they have four position reclasses. They are also participating in the JTED internship program. Again, we've had, I would say, a pretty big struggle with trying to hire and keep fleet services mechanics. As you can imagine, this, this has been kind of a rotating door for Jack Plonti and his team. They're, and they're trying to grow their own and keep their people for longer than a couple of years. And then, as far as what's happening, they've actually done, I wanna just point out really quick that Jack has found a service that I think is just phenomenal, and it's the NAPA IBS parts program. And that really is gonna take us from having to keep parts, buy parts and keep them on-site. NAPA will actually run our parts department in our facility. And any parts that we don't have, they will be responsible for bringing in from their store. And we don't, we no longer have to keep a part inventory and spend the money on part inventory that we may or may not ever use. So, I think that it's gonna save, it's definitely gonna save us time and money presently and over, over time as well. The other, the other piece of the fleet services that we're, that we're in desperate need of is the, in capital outlay, they've, their bay doors, they're dangerous, they need to be replaced. And so, we're finally gonna get that done. And then, a drive-on lift, which is also a safety improvement for the fleet services. Building Maintenance Operating Budget. So, they have six positions that are being reclassified. You'll notice the, they're, this is one of the larger increases from '22. It's 22% increase in their fiscal '23 budget. They are gonna, we're recommending that we add a crew leader position. It's something that we've been without for now almost four years. And the number of projects and number of buildings that these folks are taking care of is just overwhelming. And the age of the buildings is also catching up with them. The, they are also going to be doing a JTED internship with, in this department as well. The, the large, the, obviously, we've seen an increase in the cost of janitorial supplies and, and that kind of thing. But we also are looking and, in their supplies and services, excuse me, of hiring a consultant to improve efficiencies and work orders and reporting. But probably the most important thing that's, that's gonna happen in the Building Maintenance Department is basically hiring a consultant to, to conduct a space needs assessment. So, what we've seen over the last couple of years is we've seen departments growing out of their space. And that's departments in almost every single one of our buildings. Matter of fact, I can't think of a building where we're, we're not kind of built out within our space. And it's resulted in departments requesting additions to their buildings. And, and so, this space needs assessment will evaluate the use of the current space as well as, you know, should we add, you know, if, if we add a $1.5 million addition to a building, does that really help us? Does that, does that get us another 10 years in that building? Does it give it five years? Or is it a Band-Aid that gets us three years? You know, City Hall is, we've added space, we've added offices. We've, we've got people in cubicles. And if I was, if you were asked me to hire another person in this building, I'm not exactly sure where I would house them. So, and that's happening, like I said, in Public Works. It's happening in our fire admin, it's happening in our police department. It's, it's really, I think maybe the only place where it's, it's not currently problematic is at the airport, where they've really had nice space and it's, they had room to grow. But other than that, we really have to look at space and what we're going to ultimately do with space. And bringing in an expert consultant to look at the space and make recommendations so that we can come back and talk to the council- so that we can come back and talk to the council about what ultimately that looks like is gonna be really important.
So we had a study like that done six years ago. It was right when I first got on the council. And I remember then it said, "We needed more space." Can, can you use that study and just add to, I mean, just, if you needed it then, you definitely need it now. And I think it really comes down to just, and it said, "We did need a new building."
Yeah, it, the, so that's, I would, I've read that study. And the study said, "You need more space," but it didn't give any real recommendations. It just said, "You needed more space." We need it to go further. We, we need to, like I said, we need to know if a one point five or a two million dollar addition at the police department will have lasting effect for the growth of the, of the department where they're already doubling up in space. And, you know, what ultimately should we do? Fire admin right across the street, another perfect example. That's a really old building with cement walls.
Yeah.
And they're done. They have no ability to, their front lobby is terrible. They, they got two windows. You're not exactly sure which one you're supposed to go to. And the way that the building's constructed, there's no way to fix their lobby. And so it's, the study in twenty sixteen said, "Yeah, you need more space." But there was no, and this is what you can do, follow through on that. And so, um, there was another study done in two thousand and six that I, that I've also read that came to the same conclusion. So according to consultants, we've actually been out of space since two thousand and six. And yet we've added how many, how many positions, right?
So I think the writing on the wall is, right, you need a new building. And it'd be nice if everybody was under one roof.
Yeah, well, and that's, again, we were really successful. We've, we've been successful over the last couple of years of remodeling space and adding space. Fire station number two is a perfect example of that where we had a bid for seven million dollars to build a brand-new fire station. Well, I, I want a new fire station as much as anybody. But the city at the time just didn't have seven million to put towards that, a fire station. We remodeled, we got a remodel of station two that needs a little bit more remodeling 'cause we didn't get to some of the existing space. But ultimately, that remodel will have, will have cost us roughly two million dollars. You know, but if I put two million dollars into the police department, does that get me five years? And that's what we're hoping that this study will show us is, are we ready for a public safety facility? Because we're out of room at the fire department, we're out of room at the police department. Is it time to bring fire and police under one roof in a public safety building? I mean, that really is something I think that we need to be able to tell the community and communicate both internally and externally that we've got a plan. You know, I, I, I'm not proposing or anything for City Hall. But I mean, it's one of those things where we can see the writing on the wall. And what do we do in this, about this room is an example. There's definitely not gonna grow this room, uh, as the community grows. And the expectation to be able to accommodate citizens in a public gathering of the council, you know, workshops, whatever, um, that, that's one of those things where you're, we've, we've gotta kind of have a plan, a move-go-forward plan. And one of the things that Tina and I have been talking about is that the city, we have a great five-year capital plan. The one thing that, that I think we're missing and we're gonna be looking at as part of this study is a twenty or fif, at least fifteen, but maybe a twenty-year capital facilities plan where we can see, where we, where we're planning and everybody else can see, and no one's surprised that we show up in year ten of that plan and say, "Okay, it's time for a new City Hall." Or it's time for a Public Works building or whatever that case may be, so. So, uh, then, of course, we've got, uh, a very big number under capital outlay for building maintenance. They have a number of remodels that they're tackling. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the capital, five-year capital plan. But we've got some really old HVAC systems, one of which, several of them are sitting on this, on this building. Bless you. We have, um, some really needed remodels in pretty much every one of our buildings. And again, the one thing that we try to be cautious about, knowing that we have a needs assessment, a space needs assessment, to not spend a whole bunch of money on buildings that may not be used in the future, but still to make them usable until we get to that point. So we're, we're trying to throw good money after good money instead of, you know, you wouldn't wanna sink a bunch of money into a remodel and then move out of the building in a year or two or three, so. All right, that is the operating budgets. Any questions operating-wise? So I would propose that we take, um, how long do you need? Ten minutes, five minutes? Five minutes? Okay, we'll pick it back up at three o'clock. Three o'clock, Vice Mayor? All right. It's Annie's fault. All right. I just was, before we start through the five-year capital improvement plan, I just wanna point out that Amazon just notified me that there's a high-wind advisory for Kingman. I find that hard to believe. Well, it's not till the eleventh, so, right? So something to look forward to. All right, well, thank you for bearing with me on the operating budgets. It's, uh, it's obviously a really important part of our day-to-day service delivery. And appreciate, um, again, I wanna just, I haven't said thank you to my department heads and their, and their teams. It really, this is, like I said, this has been going on, oh, bless your heart. This has been going on since November. And a big thank you, um, to, to my teams for all the work that they put in. It is a huge lift to do the budget every year. And Tina and Wendy, I, I do need to point out that, um, Tina and Wendy have done pretty much all of this work because Melissa, you remember Melissa, uh, retired or left the organization? I guess we could say she retired. She didn't, anyway, uh, so we've been trying to hire this position for quite a while. And Tina and Wendy just did an amazing job and just blows me away, uh, how great the budget document looks. I don't know if you've had a chance to go through it, but just really great, so, thank you. And then, Council, thank you for your efforts to come to the retreat, share information, let us do a citizen survey. So thank you to everybody that helps with the budget. All right, let's move on to the five-year capital improvement budget. It's, it's kind of the, I'll say it's the fun part of budgeting. It's really the portion that you get to talk about more livability and the projects that, that the citizen, that will benefit the citizens. Obviously, the services do, but the projects are, you know, that's kind of the, the fun part. So in our effort to develop the five-year capital plan, we actually put the, these projects through a pretty strenuous review process that starts at the department level. And they're, these are the kind of the questions that they have to, to, that we, to get on the five-year capital plan, they have to meet these or answer these questions. Does it align, does the project align with the city council's strategic plan? Does it have a funding source? Is there regulatory or public employee safety component to it? Will it generate revenue and/or reduce operating costs? What is the impact of deferral or AKA puts putting it off for time? And will it increase service levels? And what is the impact on the economy? Will it create jobs and/or increase tourism? And so every time we go through this process, capital projects actually receive scores. And when we're talking to departments about their projects, we talk about the score. How relevant is this project in answering these questions? It's, it actually, you see a project that you think, "Oh, this, this seems like a really great project." And you go through this scoring criteria and all of a sudden, it scores a twenty. You're like, wow, I, you know, it's a really good filter for being able to determine what gets on the capital project list and what doesn't.
And twenty's not a great score, by the way.
Right, twenty, twenty's a terrible score. So, yeah. All right. So the five-year capital improvement, um, plan by category, clearly, the streets are the big winner in this. Now, I can't give, you know, it doesn't get all the credit for street 'cause when we say that, you might inter, interpret that to be, um, like rebuilding of streets or, or, um, that kind of thing. This, a portion of that is there, but really, the, this is our TIs that we're working on, which account for a, a really big chunk of this money. The airport, again, they get a lot of grants and do a lot of grant work. Obviously, the big portion of the airport is the dross cleanup, which I think is budgeted for thirty million, thirty million. And then, um, you can, everything else kind of comes in behind that. We have wastewater projects, some really important wastewater projects that we'll talk about, and where they are and why they're still on the, and not constructed. Um, and so let's, let's start stepping through. So the five-year CIP, we tried to break this up so that it, um, it makes sense to the groupings of, of where they're being concentrated on. So the, I wanna point out that our branding, beautification and signage, that is a direct result of our council retreat and the citizen survey. And, um, so we are, um, we are spending money and we are working on beautification and signage in our community. And in twenty twenty-three, uh, we will, should be impacting that quite a bit with some message boards that are, improve our communication and, and really look really attractive as people drive around the community. And we plan on continuing, uh, those kind of projects over the next five years. The other one, of course, is our electric vehicle experience project. We are, um, in phase one of the design, which is just the concept piece where we're going to do marketing to, and have the ability to reach out to possible contributors of different parts of the experience. And, and we're really excited about what this project can mean to our tourism piece of our economy and to our downtown. It really, we've, we've said it before, but I just cannot tell you what I think it'll do for the bookend pieces of our downtown with the powerhouse at one end and the electric vehicles at the other end. I have talked about the powerhouse somewhat and making the powerhouse, um, even better. We've got some not-so-sexy projects, the, kind of the roof replacement and some concrete work. But the conference room space is definitely, we're, we're short on gathering space that will accommodate more than, you know, twenty-five people. And this project will certainly help that. The other, last one is just the The other, last one is just the transit center feasibility study. Obviously, as we look for a better home for our transit, um, hub, where it currently sits in the Walmart parking lot is, it's a pretty unsafe site. There's been some accidents that have happened there, some number of close calls. And so, this, this is going to be that really important piece locating, um, the transit hub for the car system. So, uh, looking forward to what that is going to show us. For parks, we have, um, the Centennial, okay. Uh, we have Centennial, uh, Park Field Four lighting. So, you recall that we've been trying to tackle a field each year to improve lighting. And so, this is just the next part of that project. Also, Louis Kingman Park has become really surprisingly a central park in a lot of different activities. It is just poised to be a great facility, but in making it a great facility, the restrooms are kind of back to what we were talking about. They're somewhat original to the, to the olden days. So, this will certainly revamp the restrooms at Louis Kingman Park. Uh, we're going to continue our playground equipment replacement and improvements. We've had this line item for the last four years. It has been awesome to see new equipment go in. The most recent are climbing walls at MedCaf, or climbing structures, not walls, but bouldering at MedCaf Park that are just, you know, these kind of things make our parks Class A. It really takes it from just green space to playable space. And so, uh, we're going to continue that effort. And then, the big one on this list, of course, is Sunbelt Park. This park, um, we've been able to, unable to move it forward because this park is so dependent on what happens with the drainage with Rancho Santa Fe. As soon as the Rancho Santa Fe drainage system is designed and accepted, then we will be able to size the drainage system for this park and start building it. And so, you'll see that is anticipated over the next three years. And then, White Cliffs Trail, uh, that's, you're, just remind you that that's grant-funded for the most part. And we're now, we're working on, Mike is trying to get phase three where we actually have a trailhead a couple blocks over. And you'll be, basically with that phase three, you will be able to walk from downtown and do the entire White Cliffs Trail system. So, uh, we're really excited about that. And it's looking like the, I don't want to jinx us, but it looks like the state Parks, um, Department is, is ready to give us about $100,000 for that phase three, so, really exciting.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to back up.
Nope, you're fine.
Electric vehicle experience?
Yes.
Is that going to be the total cost of that project? 5.3?
It's what we'll be able to do.
Okay.
It, so, what we're hoping to do, that, that, in our opinion, will get it to a functioning-
Operational.
Operational facility, displaying and teaching. What we're hoping to do is add to that with private funding and other, and we are working some grant options as well. So, it may, that number may be able to increase over time. But what we currently have budgeted, based on the, kind of, the, what the architects have told us, is that we will be able to have the experience open, be really nice at that price.
Okay. And funding for that, remind us where that's coming from?
So, the funding for that was free to, we basically were able to free up general fund money because of the CARES Act money that, that we received. Was there anything else? That's it, so.
Okay, thanks.
Check with the expert.
I had some questions also.
Yes.
Um, on that same note, the electrical vehicle experience, with the initial expenditure of the 4.5 in '23, will we be able to open at what point?
So, what we've done, generally when we, when we have these projects, we'll budget the total cost of the project in a fiscal year, just hoping that we'll be able to get started. My, my real, my guess is that, that if it follows the plans that we have, we will actually be constructing that maybe the end of '23, but really probably in fiscal year '24. And we're not sure how long it will take to remodel that building because, you know, there's a lot of remodel work that has to happen in there. So, I'd hesitate to say, yeah, we can, we'll do it in six months, you know? It could be six months, it could be, it could take us a year. Hopefully not, but.
So, in Parks and Rec, um, is there an opportunity for me to request that the ice skating rink get removed? That was something that was talked about years and years ago. I know we talked about it in last budget session and I thought it was going to be removed, so.
So, we, we left it, we left it, we, we didn't want to, so we didn't want to send the message. That was, uh, an effort by local business people to, to raise some money and do the project. And we didn't, we had not heard anything on that. There, we understand that it is currently, with the pandemic, it's gone nowhere. But we wanted to make sure that we left it on in case there was some fund, some, uh, funding or some fundraising that had been done that we weren't aware of.
I, I would like to have it at least reach out to those individuals. It's been more than a year, it's probably been closer to two.
Mm-hmm.
Just because I don't want to give the perception to the public that we're going to keep it on our, that the intent is there. So, um, that was something.
Okay.
Uh, also, on Louis Kingman?
Yes.
Uh, the restrooms, I believe too, is there something we can consider with getting electrical out to that middle section? There is no electrical, I know there's been events there and they've had to run the electric from near the restroom area across the, to the middle. So, um, I don't know if now is an appropriate time to ask that that be part of that, um, request?
Yeah, we definitely can look at it.
Because as you have mentioned, we have more events there and I think it's becoming, going to become more of an issue for future events.
Yep, absolutely.
And finally, the Sunbelt Sports Park.
Yep.
Um, the funding source for that, remind me?
So, the funding source for the Sunbelt, uh, park is, um, well, Tina? Yeah, so it's the federal funding that has freed up general fund money to build it. And then, I guess I would say that development fees also, you know, it's a, it's a project that also qualifies for development fees over time. Obviously, we're not going to raise that, that, that kind of money, but it can contribute.
And that question just was for clarification for the public. I just, I want to be transparent about that, so, thank you.
You bet.
Quick question then.
Yes, sir.
Since Cherish started on the parks also. For example, the ice skating rink, I agree with Cherish. But I know I'd heard rumor of the, the, the city has thought about other splash pad?
Well, the splash pad was part of the original drawings for Sunbelt.
Okay, at that park, and then I've heard rumor about maybe possibly considering one for downtown at the, at the parks down here?
Uh, yeah.
I mean, by the ballparks and the big parks.
It's not currently in any of the five-year capital plans.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thanks.
So, you heard a rumor?
I guess so.
Okay, anything else?
I have one, um, about the rec center. I did read, um, in the budget that we're going to identify, um, some potential places to put that rec center.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm wondering about moving up, um, a concept plan because that would allow us to apply for grants. Is there, is there a way that we can make that happen in this budget cycle? The, the concept and that way, we can start-
Absolutely.
Going to the community, but also applying for those grants? I, I did see that state parks paid for a splash pad for silver, maybe?
Yeah, well, there's definitely grants.
There's some things out there. I'd like to be able to start working on those as soon as possible.
Yeah, we can absolutely. I, matter of fact, Tina and I talked about it, um, several times about timing for that and, and maybe moving, some of it moving up quicker, so.
Yeah, I think that, I, I know that will be a huge game changer-
It is.
-for attracting professionals to our community.
Yeah.
Um, and it just seems like we, we shouldn't put it off, you know, any further. And when we talk about a rec center, what I envision is like something for everyone in the community. For seniors, for kids, families, 20-somethings, right? It's a whole place where people can, you know, it's not just like a, the rec center that we have now, which is just a room. It, it's a big facility, right?
I, I hate to break it to you, but that's not a rec center. It's a converted.
I know, it isn't, but that's what we call it.
I know what's what we call it, but it's a converted fire station.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so, the concept, so the concept for this facility would, would be to basically minimize somewhat our dependence on the school district for the use of their facilities, right? So, basketball, volleyball, all ages. We have the, we have a senior center currently in our community. You know, we have a, a pretty large number of seniors in our community. And the question is, you know, what, what could this facility be in addition to or help to that? And so, yeah, when we, that's the reason why we don't normally refer to it as a recreation center. We, community center is really the more appropriate terminology for it because it really is that effort to provide something for children, the young adults, the twenties, all the, all the way up to seniors, right? So, the, so Mike and I have, I've pointed out a, a couple of community centers that were, we've started looking at as concepts or at least starting points. Cottonwood has one. And then, would, I happened to have participated in building one that was, has been mirrored in a couple other communities as well. And so, you know, everything from indoor walking tracks to basketball, to footsall, to, to cake decorating, so.
I know that economic-
Excuse me really quick, would you mind pulling your mic up? They're having a hard time hearing you online.
I'll lean forward. I know the Economic Development Director in Cottonwood said that when they have, um, companies interested in relocating to Cottonwood, that their rec center is the first stop he makes with them to show them the community and that that has made a big difference in sell, in a sell, as a selling point-
Yep.
-to relocating businesses and professionals to their community. So, I'd love to see that fast-tracked.
Yep, thank you. And we can certainly look at a concept to start being able to have a better conversation about it. So, all Tina and I, and we'll work with Mike and see what we can do. All right, thank you. All right. The next, um, the next list that we have for you is the public safety list. Again, there's just some kind of stuff that has to happen on here, some fixes and that kind of thing. I just wanted to highlight that the fire department is really working hard recognizing that their equipment is extremely expensive. And I just wanted to point out that this apparatus refurb, refurb that they've got on here for $265,000 is basically them saying, we have really great equipment that just needs to be updated. And so, we just happen to have a company in Las Vegas, right next door, that does this work. And so, they've got a quote to redo one of their fire trucks for $265,000, a vehicle that would have normally cost us, um, around a million dollars. So, it's, it's really kudos to Chief Jaeger and his team for, for being willing to look at this because there's definitely fire departments that would find this insulting. And I'm so, you know, I'm really grateful for our, my team. It's not just the fire department, but their willingness to, to look at different ways to accomplish the same end goal. And I mean, this, this refurb takes out the engine, puts a new engine in, replaces all the moving parts, and they basically roll back to you the body of the truck with all new parts. And so, um, it's, it's going to be a really great project. We have in our fire stations, every single one of them, we, we've got to do some remodel work and some updating in the, in those facilities. So, um, those are the, kind of the highlights that I wanted to point out to you on, on this list. Again, remembering that, you know, the fire department, the fire stations are unique in that we have people in them 24/7. And keep, keeping them operational and up and running and where you have to live is, is really important as well, so.
I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to say, uh, kudos to Chief Jaeger because, um, refurbishing anything, I was like, this is, this is genius. I told him to go find more things he could refurbish and he would have my vote, so. I, I think it's a, a fantastic trend.
No, I totally agree. And they, they have looked, so they went through and really dedicated to this and they went through the process and looked at some of, rest of their vehicles. And there's just some that are just too old and the, the program won't work for them. And so, you'll see purchases in later years of, of equipment. But they really have gone through and have tried to save money. The Quint that just showed up, the ladder truck, is one of those pieces of equipment that replaces two vehicles. And they bought it, they bought the demo, which saved us, uh, yeah, at least $200,000 if not more. So, the, you know, departments are really working hard to save money and recognize that other departments need money as well. So, um, really appreciate their efforts. All right. The next one is our streets. So, the streets, we've been talking about the, sorry. So, streets, there's a couple of what I would say are high-profile projects that we just want to point out. The downtown infrastructure project for 2023, plans are pretty much done and construction, we're expecting to have that, to identify a contractor to do the work and a price in which to do the work within the next, uh, couple of months. And so, the work actually to start the downtown infrastructure will, will actually happen in 2023. That's phase one. That will redo streetscape from third to fifth, bump outs, uh, new landscaping, widened sidewalks with entertainment zone sidewalk areas, uh, the whole nine yards. So, we're, we're really excited to be moving forward on that.
Are you going to be updating the, um, the website so that, because right now, there's that initial concept is on the city website, but I know people are dying to see what it's really going to turn out to be.
Yeah, as soon as the architects, or as soon as the firm gets us the final, then that, that will go up in its place.
Great.
We've just been, I think they've been sitting at 95% and we're just waiting for them to hand us the plans, so.
Very good.
Um, the other one, of course, Eastern Street. This one has been in the works for 20 years, 15, it's been a long time. This is probably one of the more important projects that we will do this year. This is grant-funded and we've been waiting for the grant to kick in. And, um, so, Eastern Street, this will realign Eastern Street. It will take out the one-way system that currently impacts Diamond and will make Eastern the street it needs to be, which is really, uh, really important. I don't know, Artira, I guess it's a major collector. And, and it will change the face of that area of the community and the neighborhood. We need to do it just for the neighborhood. I, every time I drive through that area, I feel bad for, for the people that live on Diamond and how, what a nightmare that is. And I've talked to, over the years, I've talked to people that live on Diamond and they've been excited for 2023, so, it's finally here. Of course, we've got the Kingman Crossing, we've got- Of course, we've got the Kingman Crossing, we've got Rancho Santa Fe, we've got the airway project that's part of Rancho Santa Fe. And so we're excited to get that project moving forward at both of them. Just a reminder, uh, Kingman Crossing is currently in engineering design at thirty percent. And we're just waiting for the irrevocable letter of credit on Rancho Santa Fe. And that's been tied to our, the E, the environmental assessment for the, um, for the road itself, which is coming along, reports, Jack has updated me that there, that the reports that AECOM are doing are being accepted and and working through the FAA's process. So I think good news, it's not moving as fast as we want it to, but it's, it's in progress and we're, all these numbers, of course, have been updated and are in, currently in line with being able to construct it at today's prices. So if for some reason prices go down in the next little six months or so, maybe, maybe the, we'll have a cost savings. But currently, it will, we do anticipate this covering all the costs that we have, that we're responsible for on the TIs. The other one, uh, we've wanted, that we've talked about already is the pavement preservation. Again, I, what I wanted to point out is that in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven, you'll see that Tina has basically about six point five million dollars. That is a contribution from the general fund and is not sustainable over, over really more than a seven-year period. And so we've got to find a funding source that when that money needs to go back into the general fund services, that we have the ability to continue to maintain our streets. And I, I, what I've got for you a little bit later is an outline for what that ultimately can, should look like or could look like, so. Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question on that. So with the initial ten million dollar investment and then six point four year after, like you said, for the next few years.
Yes, ma'am.
At that six point four, where are we at?
Collector and Arterio roads online.
I didn't want you to say that.
I know, I know, I didn't want to have to say it. I was, I was, when I originally talked with, um, Jack and Rob about our plan to to do this, I asked that very question, okay, how much residential work can I get done with this? And bless you, the, um, the answer was, we can, this will keep our collector and Arterio roads where they have to be for a PCI to be appropriate so that it doesn't cost us. Because obviously collector and Arterio roads are extremely expensive, they're heavily traveled. And so the, the major wear and tear on these roads, sixty-six, Stockton Hill, Eastern, Southern, make airway, you start making the list, and these are really long roads with a lot of traffic on them. And they just take a lot of money to maintain. And so that, um, but we'll, we'll talk more about what the full funding looks like and how we can accomplish what you're asking.
Okay, good, because that was gonna be my next question. And then also with the traffic patterns possibly changing after the master plan is done, you know, and and what that effect will have on it, is that considered as well in the years going forward?
Yeah, uh, that's a, that's a great question. Ultimately, it will be another master plan. You know, Rancho Santa Fe comes online, Kingman Crossing comes online. The true impact of that won't be known until people are on them. Does that, you know, ultimately, does that mean, you know, in in my opinion, traffic on Wallapai Mountain Road changes, right? I mean, we've got a big portion of the eastern bench that will no longer have to drive up to Wallapai Mountain Road. But there's also a lot of growth opportunity up there. So what does that ultimately look like? We won't know. So, good question, though. All right. Let's see. Is there anything else that I? It's the, it's a safety, safety improvement projects.
Okay.
Yeah, it's A dot, it's A dot.
Like they're doing on Stockton Hill Road off the I forty.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. Yeah, there's, those are community improvements that A dot funds to improve safety that they know ultimately is people come off the freeway, it, so.
When you also have traffic interchange landscaping, is that the landscaping around the freeway interchanges?
Yes, so that's, you may recall from my, my weekly that we've been fighting with A dot about the placement of the welcome to Kingman signs. Our intention is basically to make those welcome to Kingman signs bigger and put them on the, on the boundaries of the city as people come in on the freeway. We're also looking at trying to place some, a a couple of these welcome monument signs, maybe on Stockton Hill if we have, if we have property and the spacing accommodates it. Is, and that's part of our beautification pro- project as well. But a big portion of it is the TI work and just how A dot basically has let the TIs go. And so those landscape work is, is definitely our, gonna be our effort to make them more attractive as people get off the freeway.
Well, especially since we're the ones that are maintaining it now, since we've taken that over from A dot.
Right.
Okay.
So that's what that project will do. Now, it's, I, what I need to set expectations. Our TIs are extremely big. I mean, they're, they're, they, they're long and they have a lot of open space associated with them. So we're trying to tackle the space the best that we can with the money that we have. But, you know, don't, I don't want anybody to think that we're gonna completely landscape both sides, the exit and the entrance, because, and all the way down. We just, we just don't have the funding to do that, so. But we are gonna try to make them attractive because when people pull into our community, it's the first, it's the first exposure that they get. That's why we wanted the monument signs there, is that we, you know, A dot can have unattractive areas off the freeway, but at least there'd be a nice welcoming sign with our logo and, but they were having none of that. So we're gonna do our best to make them attractive, so. All right, good question, thank you. All right, the next item is the airport. So the airport has some really big projects. Obviously, the Dross site cleanup dominates the day there, with thirty million dollars. That's, it's wonderful. I haven't been part of the conversation for the entire time, but I'm just grateful that we can see a sunset to this issue and that we're actually going to improve our airport and make it actually more usable, we'll have more usable space. So it's, it's ultimately becoming a really important project. The other really important project, I didn't realize how important until, I don't know if anybody's seen the new road that's been put out at the airport, but there's, we wrote a grant and a new, a new stretch of road was put in. And wow, is it so nice. And so we have, um, industrial park roads budgeted for twenty-three for five hundred and thirty thousand and some change. And again, in an effort to make the industrial park really a great place to do business is obviously the roads and being able to move trucks, truck traffic in and out. So the, improving the, the roads does a couple of things. It improves the industrial park, but what's great is we're building these roads to the county standards. And then the county has agreed to actually add the roads into their road system. So then they'll be maintained over time. So it's kind of, we're kind of, uh, best of both worlds on that. The other one that I wanted to point out is, of course, the, the big taxiway projects. These are federally funded projects where we, thank heavens, don't have to put in a whole bunch of money. There's, there's some money that we have to contribute, but this is actually, these are, end up being three-way projects between the FAA, the A dot, um, air folks, and then we bring in, I think it's eight percent, four and a half percent. So, so very little to really important projects that make our airport so much better. And so that, that's, those are both gonna be great projects for the airport as well. All right. So on our stormwater and solid waste, I think everybody knows that we're in the process of replacing our trash trucks. That's happening, again, slower than what we were hoping for, they're behind. But I think the important piece of, that what I wanted to cover in this area is just the stormwater issues. You recall that we've been in the process of developing stormwater fees and that we have a, a capital project list of stormwater projects that we don't have on the five-year capital plan because we just simply don't have the money to put them there yet. But the ones we are going to be tackling are on the list. And for this upcoming year, the Airway Avenue drainage improvement, uh, that is a big project that's very much needed. And then the Hillcrest drainage improvement, again, a little bit this year and then the big portion of that, the rest of that is in twenty twenty-four. And when, when we get the, when if, I guess I shouldn't count my chickens before they hatch, but if we're able to get a stormwater, uh, fee in place, the, we hope that this capital project list looks a lot different because we have a lot of areas where drainage is just, it's a, it's a major problem. And probably one of the places where we face the most complaints from citizens is, you know, is when it rains, people just, they're not, they're, they're, they don't expect it. It's, and they're, you know, it's not unusual for a river to flow between two homes because drainage behind them wasn't taken care of properly. So as we move forward, more, uh, more capital projects landing on this list. All right, uh, the wastewater, so the one that I wanted to highlight, there's the, of course, the reclaim water recharge well, that's one that will be online in twenty twenty-three. This one, again, supply chain has been a real bear for getting all of the required parts. We have a contractor that's just been waiting for parts. But we, we anticipate being able to have this go live in twenty twenty-three. The other, the other one, as far as sewer goes, that's really important, is the Hilltop Plant Bio-Solids Containment Area. There's nothing sexy about sewer, but when it goes away and is treated, it's wonderful. And this is key to making that happen. We absolutely have to do this, that project. And then the, the big one on the list, uh, has been our, it, you'll remember that it was on the list to be done in twenty twenty, was it twenty twenty? Twenty twenty, we were gonna do this in twenty twenty and we had it originally budgeted for twelve point five million dollars. The contractor was identified, they came back and gave us a price that was sixteen million. Well, that's way more than what we were, the, the engineering estimates. And so we said, go back and sharpen your pencil and tell us what you really can do, uh, this project for. And they came back and they said they could do it for fourteen point five. So when, as we were getting ready to move forward with this project, they redid the numbers and it came in higher again. And so basically, what we were forced to do is call timeout on this project. It's, it's key to, we need to do it, we have to do this project. Because the, the line is currently exposed above ground and in drainage and in stormwater areas where if it breaks, we would have real, quite a bit of problem where we'd all, if it breaks, we'd face fines from DEQ and the EA, EPA. And we obviously don't wanna do that, we don't wanna afford that. And we certainly wanna be spending the money on the system itself. So in an effort to just try to get this project done and done affordably, we're proposing, we moved it to twenty twenty-four, hoping that pricing will come back to what we're a little bit more used to. And that's still up, you know, three million dollars over what we originally had scoped this project out for. And just as a reminder, this project actually does two things. It puts the sewer in a more reliable line out to the sewer plant, but it also anticipated a purple pipe project, bringing water back from the sewer plant instead of just flowing it out onto the ground, putting it in a usable system and watering parks and perhaps other grass areas in the downtown area. So just wanted to point that out because it has been appearing in the capital projects list for a few years now. And it's not, we did not leave it in twenty-three because we just didn't think pricing for that project was gonna be in line with what we were expecting until twenty-four, so. Those are our sewer projects.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Sewer extension capital projects.
Yep.
Where are those?
So the sewer extension capital projects are a myriad of projects that instead of listing them out one by one, we just bring them all together and call them under this name. So there's a number of small projects that add up to this project, so.
The reason I'm asking, is this where it would be appropriate to put the Grace Neal?
So the Grace Neal, um, line would fall under a capital projects line, but what we're proposing is that that fall under the, um, the not, I almost said development and capacity, thank you, under the capacity fee capital projects, which are not part of this, um, they're not part of the regular sewer CIP projects. And so we are, we are going to talk about that, but it's not, it's not at this spot. Yep. All right. So the next one is our water capital projects. Again, we have a number of pretty important projects here. I, I do wanna point out that our automated meter reading, um, project is a really important project in our effort to conserve water and to be able to be timely in being able to turn water off that's being lost in the system. So if someone has a, a break in, or a toilet that's fully running, the system would immediately alarm and allow us to be able to turn that meter off without losing all that water. And it's just one of those things where, um, we've made some progress in replacing, um, meters with the, with the read meters or the automated read meters. But this will take us to a whole new level. And so we, we're proposing that we, this is actually at a half a million, is stepped up from the last couple of years. And, um, Kealan and Rob feel like as they ramp up more, that they'll be able, as they do more of these, that they'll get better at it and they'll be able to do more over time and quicker. And so, um, the, ultimately, the project at four million dollars, really, over the five-year period, gets a majority of our water meters replaced. So that is a project that we've been doing and we're excited to be able to continue to do that. The other one, there, not a lot of fancy projects on here, just needed projects. The, the Santa Rosa Transmission Line is just a big project up on the. The, the Santa Rosa Transmission Line is just a big project up on the east bench that is just, it's needed as part of how we're going to develop that part of the community. And will be, will be key to our, our water system. The main tank transmission line, again, with the, with the new tank going in, we've got to get lines going away from it. So it's just, it's a part of building redundancy in our system and, and having a system that's reliable over time. And that takes us to the end of the capital project. So I did want to stop and just talk about the, the Grace Neal project. So in the Grace Neal project, you remember last year we adopted the capacity fees for water and sewer? And there was a list of projects that we put into place for that, to develop the, the fees for that. And so what we're going to, what we're going to plan on doing for Grace Neal is go back through the process and add that project to the fees. And one of the things that we've, you know, there's no design on it. So what we would propose is go through the process, add that project in to, to the list. And then go through the design process, which would, that process will more than likely take us to this date next year. So that we are ready to construct it in, starting fiscal year 24. And that's, I think that gets us the funding that we need to be able to move forward with that project.
If there were participants in the design phase that would fund or be able to speed that up, is it, could it be a priority and be moved up? Or is it still going to take us to fiscal year 24?
It's, it's not really the participation in the design, it's just how long it takes to get things designed. And, you know, it's about, based on engineering estimates, we're talking about a $3.7 million project is what it's, it's looking like. It's, that's a, I would say that that's a pretty comfortable number that the engineering department is, is think, that they think that we can do that project within that, that frame. The, the process to get this project added to, to the list is what? Three, between three and six months? Three to four months? And then the, the design, based on workload, is, you're probably talking about at least another, at least three months to get it designed. And so, you know, the question ultimately is, you know, could, could work start on this in fiscal year 23? It, it, it's possible that it could happen. I'm not, I'm not sure if, if that's, I mean, three to six, or six to nine months? And constructing in month 10? It could be. I, I just, you know, when you, I hate having to deal with timing because you're just, these things just seem to get complicated over, over time, so.
I understand. So the process you said would take three, can, can you just for mine and the public's purposes, could you tell us what the process would look like? To get it put on the, the projects list?
Yeah, so it'll look just like what we went through with the capacity fees. Ms. Tina, you want to just grab your microphone and walk, walk?
You could, huh? So the first thing we would do is reach back out to Tischler Bisch and have them add the project to their list, go through and update the report and bring that back to you. That'll take them close to a month or so to get that done, three to four weeks with workload. And then we have to go through the adoption process, much simpler than development fees, which requires, you know, nine months. This would take 30, we have to post it for 30 days and then it's got to come to the council. And we have to adopt a notice of intent. And I believe it's another 30 days later, we can hold the public hearing. And then it can go to effect 30 days after that, I believe, is how the ordinance works. So anywhere from, it's a few, a few months. And some of those timelines, the adopted, the adopted notice of intent to public hearing might only be 15 days, but we're still talking about three to four months.
So that's our current plan. Again, when, when the actual construction can occur, that, that I'm not sure. But we certainly will, you know, obviously in the design process, that's where I think there's much more unknown. The, you know, I don't think Tischler Bisch will have that much of a difficulty fitting it into their workload. I mean, we haven't talked to them about this yet. We, we definitely, that's what we're planning to do, is what we said we would do. And there's, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it. Question becomes, will, you know, will, does the council support it? We, we want to bring it to you as, as an option, so. Okay. All right. That's our, that's our five-year capital project list. I think, great questions, great dialogue. So the last, the last piece of what we wanted to cover with you at this, at this time is the pavement preservation program and funding alternatives. So this is something that I know we've been talking about for five or six years with some solutions and then some backward stepping. So. So basically, what we did was we challenged Jack and Rob to look at our transportation system and tell us what it would take to improve our PCI, our pavement condition index, and what we would, what we would do or need to do to pay for that, that funding. And so that's what these next slides are for you. So just as a backdrop, in 2021, 85% of our, of those surveyed rated the quality of the streets poor or fair. And in 2019, it was 80%. 2018, 83%. So it's, the citizens have been noticing this as an issue for a long time. In 2021, we asked the question about what priorities would be on some really important areas of, of the city. And one of those, of course, street maintenance and improving streets. 96% of those people that were randomly surveyed, 96%, that's, that's, that's 100% in my book, right? And that, that they, they said that maintaining and improving our streets was either essential or very important. And I, the council knows this. And just as a follow-up, in 2019, the response was 90% and in 18, 89%. So it's, it, it's become more and more obvious to our citizens. In 2021, 78% of our citizens surveyed responded that they would either strongly or somewhat support an additional $150 per 1,000 assessed value property tax as a funding source to establish and maintain pavement preservation program. Now, we asked this question because there'd been a number of comments as we had gone through some public hearings on fees, that we had some, some comments that, that maybe the community supported. It was time that the community was in, ready to support a property tax. And so we left it at property tax. Now, we've talked about two taxing options, right? We've talked about a sales tax increase and we've talked about a property tax. You know, it, or I would like to say a combination thereof, but I don't think that's in our, I don't think that's in our reality right now. But I mean, that, that's to be seen. So our, just some statistics on our current network statistics. We have 400, basically 460 lane miles in our system. Of those lane miles, 72% of those lane miles land within the residential road area. The other, the other slices of the pie are the arterials, the collectors and the minor arterials. That, those, that smaller piece of the pie costs the majority of the money, as we've been talking about. The current PCI by functional class is what you would expect with lack of funding. Those are, those roads that are critical to your economic development are the ones that are the best in our system. Arterial, the minor arterial and the collectors. But you'll notice that the collectors aren't that far off from residential. Just kind of telling you how costly the arterial and the minor arterial roads really are in the system. But the color coding shows you that we currently do not have any of our, our function classes in the green. And we're below or at 70 PCI with our, with what should be our best roads. So again, I think that's not necessarily super bad news. But you, we really, you want to see your arterial roads in the 70, at least 75 PCI range. So this is not meant to be red, per se. It's just to show you how many of our roads are in kind of failure mode according to the PCI study that we recently did. So what you're hoping to see is green and yellow, and not a lot of yellow. But certainly not as much orange and red is what's, what you're seeing. So this is what we're working from. So pavement preservation program, the rec, so the recommendation is to really, over the next 10 years, to take our entire network average from what you see on the left, I mean, on the right, and have it really over the next seven years, end of year seven, have all of those columns peeking into the green area, if at all possible. And I think based on the numbers that we've got for you, that we actually can show you at the end of year seven, progress there. So you, our current network average for PCI is 52, starting fiscal year 23. And so I just want to show you that by year eight, that we can get this leveled out and that we can keep it level with the right funding source. So, so we have a couple of alternatives that we wanted to, to present today. First is that, and I've talked about this already, is that the general fund can basically provide, till 20, till fiscal year 29, we can do 5.5 million. And then the ability to do that, based on forecasting, is, goes away. And that's when we, whatever we do, we have to have something in place by fiscal year 29 to pick up the slack. So what we've talked about is the sales ta, a sales tax increase. It must be approved by the voters and we, it must be done in November on an even numbered year. So our next opportunity to do this is November of 2022. If we don't do it in November of 2022, we're waiting until the presidential election in 2024. I cannot recommend that you put a sales tax increase on a presidential election year. Now, desperate times call for desperate, desperate measures, right? But it, it almost feels like if you don't do it in '22, you're waiting till '26. But it's not saying you couldn't do it in '24. The council must approve the resolution by early July of 2022. It's a big-ticket option and it, tax goes into effect the following March. The property tax increase that we've talked about, it must be approved by the voters at an election on the third Tuesday in May. So it's, it's, anytime you play with property tax, it has to be a separate standalone May election. So our next opportunity to do that is May of 2023. If you don't get it done in May of 2023, you can do it in May of 2024. It has to be, that's the rules set out. Council must approve a resolution. If you're going to do it in May of 2023, you have to approve a resolution early January '23. So much more lead time. Taxes would go into effect the next fiscal year. So basically you'd start collecting the taxes November, December of 2024, or, I mean, 2023, sorry. Or you can do a combination thereof. A small sales tax increase and a small, a smaller suggested property tax increase. I think it's, I think that's a big pill to swallow. I, I really, you know, as much as I want the, us to have a property tax because it's so much, it provides stability to our taxing system, it's, I don't think you're doing both. I think you're really choosing one or the other. And then, you know, sometime in the future, if you want the other, then you just have to start educating and, and talking about it on a regular basis, well in advance. And that's why I think one of these options has a better chance than the other. And I'll explain that in just a minute.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
When you talk about the big ticket option, am I thinking along the lines of if you're purchasing a big ticket item such as a car or vehicle, along those lines, that it would not be applicable to the tax increase or it would be on a sliding scale?
So it would, so you're right on, counselor. And that is basically if we had, I always refer to it as a tiered system. So if, if you had an, an object that costs $20,000, as an example, the, the tax rate on that sales, if you adopted or wanted a tiered system, you would, the first $10,000 would be charged, a sales tax at the new rate. And anything above that is charged at the old rate. So as an example, we're currently at 2.5%. If you did a tiered system, you would charge 3% up to $10,000 or whatever that number is. I mean, there's no magic number, it's wherever you pick it, right? And then anything above that number established would be charged at the original 2.5%. Is, that's kind of how the systems are, the tiered systems work.
So my next question, no matter what the council's pleasure is, is there a way to earmark these funds strictly for street preservation?
So.
And and will we be able to have a plan as to how, I mean, it, it wasn't a surprise that 72% of our streets are residential and they're the most neglected. So to me, the highly trafficked areas, I do understand that they have to be taken care of. So the less trafficked areas are the most complained about.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep.
I mean, that's where people live, that's the value of their home, that's, you know, all those things are determining factors. So I, I know something has to be done, I think we all do. But whatever our pleasure is, I just, I want to protect those funds for the citizens and to whatever means, and maybe you're going to cover that. But those funds have to be protected or I don't think they're going to, the public is not going to buy into anything that we're proposing.
Okay. And I'll just, again, I'll, I'll just tell you what the rules are. And we're going to have to educate to the rules, right? If you place property tax or sales tax on the ballot, it's, do you support a percentage? If you place property tax or sales tax on the ballot, it's, do you support a percentage increase to sales tax? Yes or no? You've got, and that's the same with property tax. Do you support this rate for property tax, yes or no? So on the ballot, there's, that's how it appears on the ballot. In your voter pamphlet is where you get to educate people. And you get to say, this money, the ju, money generated from this tax will go to road maintenance and road preservation. And we have a history of living up to that with the restaurant tax that we adopted in twenty-twelve, right? In twenty-twelve. So the city has lived up to its commitment, what it said it was going to spend the money on, it spent the money on. There, and that's, I think that it's, that's what we, what you could look everybody in the eye and say, we have a plan, and I'll show you what that plan looks like, and this is what we're going to do with the money. But there's nothing that you can do as a, as a council that says, this money has to be spent on roads. And I've asked that question a number of times, and it's, it's, it's just, but like I said, there, it's going to be, when you can't follow the plan, it's, the people have the right to elect people to make it right. So that, I mean, they ultimately have the say. The council can shift the money, I mean, but if, if they were to do that, the citizens have the right to say, you didn't do what you said you were going to do, and we're replacing you. But yeah, as a council, you have no ability to tie this, to tie strings on it. It's, but that's what we're going to do with the money.
And that's a shame, but I understand. Um, so, so then my next question becomes, if the public were to pass one or, or whatever's presented to them, and then we make our presentations and, and talk about the road, uh, street preservation, what kind of priority will be put on residential? Can we go to the public and say, residential streets are going to become a priority, you know, with these extra, you know what I'm saying?
I know, exactly.
It's like, we, we've got to make the public aware that these are not going to continue to go into arterial roads, and we've got to bring those residential streets up to par.
Yeah, no, well, there's no, we've got funding to take care of, you know, we can, for the next seven years, I can take care of arterial and collectors, right? So the, we have a plan already in place, excuse me. The city, the streets department has the city quadrant, there, there's quadrants already established, seven quadrants. There's, there's no mistake about why we get, we can get this done in seven years, because we have seven quadrants that we will tackle. And now, the, the problem that you're going to run into, counselor, is, yeah, why didn't you start in my quadrant, right? But that's, that's a ha, that's a happy, I think that's more of a happy conversation, is, you know, you're going to get done. It's just, you know, you're, we're anticipating quadrant three in year three, kind of thing, so.
Well, I think we start with the roads that are unpaved and pave those first.
Actually, I don't think this, I, I don't think these numbers do that. I don't think we're, I don't think we're tackling gravel roads or dirt roads that already exist. I think we're doing pavement.
What about our half-roads, or half and eighteen inches roads?
Half plus eight.
Half plus eight, yes.
Yeah, no, this, again, this does, I, I mean, I, Jack will absolutely correct me if I'm wrong, but what this, this does is it tackles existing roads as they stand right now. This does not add, this does not add additional money to build new roads. It is, this is straight-up pavement pres and maintenance.
Jack gave us that number a while back, as far as total, there was, as you mentioned, five point five every year for arterials and, and main roads. What's the number that he needs for?
I'm, I'm getting there.
You're getting there?
I'm getting there, yeah.
I mean, that's what, okay.
Yeah, we'll talk about it in just a minute, absolutely. Anything else? Okay. All right. So, um, all right. So the funding alternatives, general fund and sales tax. So what we wanted to show you is basically what would be needed to be able to fund all the maintenance and pavement preservation for a seven-year period that tackles the residential roads and all the other main roads. And in that, the program cost breakout as, as shown in the pavement preservation program. So it's anticipated that the cost, the program cost would be eighty-five, just basically eighty-five million dollars. Maintenance total is another eighteen million. So a total ten-year cost to do all of our roads is a hundred and three million dollars. In today's funding, the way that we currently have it laid out, we can cover fifty-five point five million dollars worth of that. So in the recommendation for funding, to get all the residential streets and with the HERF money that we get, plus the restaurant, plus the general fund, five point five million, we need a sales tax rate of point five-six percent, or fifty-six, uh, half plus six percent, um, sales tax to make up the difference. If we have that along with these other funding sources, we basically get, in a ten-year period, we get all of the, the roads up to that PCI that we just talked about. And actually, just talking about capital projects, you actually, we need a hundred and three million. With this plan, we actually generate a hundred and nine million. So you end up with some extra funds to be able to participate in.
Pave those roads.
Pave those roads, right? So, so you do have some flexibility there to do some, some road capital projects that you wouldn't normally have. And one of the reasons why we like the sales tax option is because it actually, at, at this amount, we felt like it was something that the community was really familiar with. We, we, okay, it's a weird number, point five-six is a weird number. But it really does accomplish everything you needed to accomplish. The community knows what's happened in the past, they're familiar with sales tax. We've been talking about it for four years. I very rarely run into anybody who's lived in this community for longer than a year, who doesn't, isn't aware of the half percent for roads and support the half percent for roads. So you've got, a lot of the education is already done. You got people who know about it, or they're certainly aware of it, and have suggested that they support a half a percent, or thereabout, of sales tax. The drawback to that is that it's maybe perceived that you don't have enough education time. My argument to that would be, people have been educated about this for the last four or five years, we've been talking about it. So I don't think it will come as a surprise, maybe to very new people. But again, we have information pieces that have been on our website, videos about roads, about the need for funding, and we're certainly, um, going to continue to do informational pieces that try to get people to understand what the challenges are and, and what we face. So that's the sales tax. Yes, ma'am?
I want to make sure that we point out that the point five-six percent increase that is in the recommended funding does not take into account a big-ticket option. If we were to take that into account, it would increase that rate, because we need to make up the lost revenue that we would not receive, so it would be a higher rate. So not, not much higher, about point six-zero, but it would be a higher rate to make up that funding loss.
Point zero six.
Point zero six, thank you.
Point zero six.
Well, it would be point six-zero percent.
Right, right, right.
That's where I was going, okay.
So remind us, what's our current tax rate right now? I mean, I mean, from the county is five point eight?
Well, it's, ours is two point five.
I know, ours is two point five, but what's, if you buy a product in, in the city, what's the total sales tax? Eight point one, okay.
So taking that a step further, how do we rank amongst the rest of the state?
Well, like, that's a really hard question. And, and I don't know if you're, I'll just do a reminder, because you, what you've got to take into account is, you got to take into account communities that have property tax and sales tax. You have to take into account communities that have sales tax on general goods and food, and then you have to take, or, I almost said and, you have to take into account communities that just have sales tax on goods, but don't cover public safety. And then you have to take into account communities that have full-service public safety that they're covering, and just goods and services. Based on that formula, there are only three communities in the state that have our taxing formula. So it's, it's really hard to say where the tax, what residents are paying for taxes. Because, I mean, if you just do it, if you just say, Kingman pays eight, you know, I, I live in Kingman, or I buy something in Kingman, it's eight point one percent. Well, you can do that pretty easily, but it doesn't take into account what.
There's no property tax.
Well, no property tax, but again, it doesn't take into account that we're, there's communities that have only sales tax, but they're charging for sales tax on food and general goods.
It sounds like you just created the information piece.
Yep.
Or, or education.
Well, and we have, we've done that, so.
Right, yeah. I, um, I, I lean more towards this as well, and I lean more towards the big-ticket option as well, um, because that was the struggle, is that last time, we didn't reach out, we didn't get input from the community, from the, you know, the, the big retailers. Yeah, so, so I, I do, I do lean in, in, more in favor of this. I, if you think about our population outside of the city limits, we have, you know, thirty thousand plus outside this city limits that are driving in for our services.
Yep.
Using those high-dollar arterial roads and feeder roads. And, and so if we don't do a sales tax, we're not going to capture any of that revenue. So, I mean, that's kind of where my mind goes.
Yeah, and I'll just, and that, you bring up a good point, counselor, and I, I'd just add to that, that it's, just a reminder that the calculation, based on the latest, uh, there was an ASU study about how much sales tax is, comes to our businesses and, or how much sales comes to our business, and sales tax comes to the city, based on outside, um, support, and that's tourism, that's surrounding community, is somewhere between fifty-five and sixty-five percent. So it's a, it's a big number that's paid by people outside of the, you know, outside the city limits, so. No. My hope is it goes a little more, you know, as we add more commercial businesses that, you know, obviously you want to keep that high, but we want to, you know, right now, how much money is going outside the city by, by citi, citizens that are going to other communities and spending their money, right?
Yeah, just over the hill.
Right.
Right?
Yep. So, so, yeah, so that's sales tax. Um, so we wanted to show you also property tax, since that has been a conversation. I will say that, that we used a, a pretty small number, um, in the citizen survey, and the numbers that we're showing you in this mirror what we talked about in the citizen survey. So based on, based on what we are showing, uh, of course, we still have the original pavement preservation program at one point three million. The cost that we need to make up is still that, um.
Yeah, that doesn't change.
It, it doesn't change the cost. What ends up happening is, on your property tax, you, we need to adopt a property tax that will generate approximately twenty-two million dollars. And so with that, you don't, if we ha, use the numbers that we, that we had proposed, that actually ends up generating, with all funding sources, it actually generates a two million dollars less than the sales tax that we were showing you. Not, not really a huge difference, but based on trying to stay true to a lower property tax number that we've talked about, and I guess I should say it's a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, not a hundred and fifty. Tina's going to kick me under the table. Uh, but at a hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, per one thousand, we are able to do the same fixes and have the money needed over time to, to continue the road maintenance and preservation. And, um, those are the two, those are your two sources. And I, again, I just can't recommend that you try to get fancy and do a combination. I think you got to do one or the other, and if you, if there's really a desire to do a property tax, I, I, I think you tackle that at another time on it, you know, and maybe you tie it to some other service. Maybe you tie it to public safety, or something like that.
Just in the interest of discussion, um, is there any opportunity to do, um, improvement districts?
Yes.
For street prev, preservation?
Absolutely. So.
So what does that look like?
So that looks like a neighborhood coming, so it's a perfect example of, I live on an unpaved street, and I want, I want to pave my street. I get with my neighbors, and we decide that we, we want a paved street. And so one of the things that we've talked about with Jack and Rob would be, if we had some extra funding that we could, the city could partner with special improvement districts, right? We could be, you know, we could be twenty percent of the project, or we could be twenty-five percent of the project, or we could do curb gutter and sidewalk, and the neighborhood pays for the street, kind of thing. There's, you know, some different options.
Combinations.
Yeah, different combinations, um, but yes, the special improvement districts work really well. They get infrastructure put into place. You, you run into them all the time with sidewalk projects, you run into them. Uh, one of the more common ones is lighting, neighborhood lighting projects, where people want streetlights, and they participate in a street lighting, um, project.
So would you do that? Would you do that over the whole city, like, uh, as, the city as a whole? Would you do it per subdivision? Would you do it in quadrants? What, what does that look like?
I think it would be by participate, willingness to participate, and you would have, um, you would have a pot of money if you, if the, if the city was going to do a participation. So we, so we have some money to participate with people in sidewalks, right? And so you would basically have this pot of money, and then when it was used up, the next people that showed up and wanted to do a special improvement district would be waiting to the next funding cycle for city participation. So, yeah, it, you know, if, if they just had to do it, there's nothing saying that they, that they'd have to wait either. But, yeah, I mean, the special improvement districts absolutely work. But it does require property owner participation.
Ron, I have some questions on the numbers you gave out, the hundred and three million?
Yes.
That was on Jack's numbers?
Yes.
To do everything?
Yep.
And that is subbing it out like he's been doing?
So that is basically a combination of all different formats of, of maintaining streets. It's.
Okay.
It's.
Because the, the issue I've always had with, with farming all that out is those contractors are making thirty to forty percent on us. And, and a project that big, you take thirty percent, that's thirty million dollars. We can go buy our, our equipment that's outdated, and let's get new equipment and start doing all this in-house again, like we've done for the last fifty years.
Yeah, it's, yep.
So, that would be my concern, if we're gonna go after that much money and, and have, I, I mean, I understand right now, we, we don't have enough money to pave or, or to maintain, what, how many miles a year? But if we're gonna go after that much money, I think we need to show the people that we can do it like we used to, in-house, and do it cheaper. Cause just to the thirty percent savings, cause that's probably a standard markup on a asphalt company on, on doing projects like this for us, that's, uh, thirty million, nine hundred thousand dollars.
That's true.
I think we can buy a lot of equipment with that, and even add a, you know, a few, I know he, he griped about, uh, or I shouldn't say griped, he mentioned manpower.
Yep.
That, you know, he needs more manpower while we're doing this.
Correct.
You know, um, I, I think for that much money, we can hire some more people.
Well, yeah, I, I, I don't disagree.
So if we go that route, I really wanna revisit us buying new equipment and doing it in-house.
Okay.
That, that's my thought.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
Yeah, you, really, I don't know that there's, there's no option that we wouldn't consider.
Yeah.
And obviously, you know, we're sophisticated enough to do the, the analysis on, on what those costs are in-house versus out of house, and certainly willing to, to, to work on it. We wanna, clearly wanna do as much roads as we possibly can.
Yeah.
You know, we just, in the, I know in the past, they pulled, um, personnel out of the parks departments, and they, they pulled people out of water and sewer, and, and we just don't have that. I don't know what the staffing looked like back when they were doing that, but we certainly, you know, the expectation for taking care of parks is, is such that we, we can't afford to miss, uh, two, even two-week windows.
Well, I, I know in the past, we've subbed out the trucking.
Yep.
You know, maybe we sub out the trucking, and we sub out traffic control. There's companies out there that we can work with, but we need our own equipment to do the lay down.
Right.
And everything.
Yeah, we certainly, I mean, we certainly have models around us, the county has a model, Bullhead has a model that we certainly can look at. And again, cost sharing between the communities, you know, that's something that I know the city managers, the tri-city, city managers have talked about. You know, what does that ultimately look like, working with the county? Is there windows that the county, um, that we can work with the county as well? And save, save costs there, so, yeah, there's, everything's on the table for cost savings, so you're, you're absolutely right.
But as a funding mechanism, I think we need to move forward and get something on the table.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to talk about it. We, this was, our feeling was that this, this was the, out of, you know, the budget's really important, but this is really our future for roads, and what our roads are gonna look like. Because you just, you know, we can't, the mistake we would make is taking five point five million and putting it in residential streets and letting our, our, those really expensive roads fall in PCI. And it's a, it's a hard pill to swallow, I know. It's, 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 and it's not understood, because you're right, counselor, you pointed out that roads in your neighborhoods are what people see, but I'm, if you ignored, if we ignored some of these major roads, it, it would become clear quickly, and it would be way more expensive than five point five million to put them back to where they needed to be, so. So, we're out of time. I can't believe we actually made it. So, I mean, I can't see, I, I don't have the option to see our counselors, the counselor Nelson and the mayor on the, on our feed. Oh, there, I see him, so, I still don't, oh, there, there's the mayor, is, uh, do we no longer have, um, Counselor Nelson? Okay, so, I just, what I'm gonna say, uh, obviously you can't take a vote, this is a work session, but I'm just looking at what people's reaction are to this next question, which is, is there a general sense of support for a sales tax, um, vote for November of twenty twenty-two?
I would say yes.
Okay.
Of course, we gotta nail down a number, too.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think we, basically, the science behind the numbers we've presented are what we would present to you.
Well, Cherish and I were talking, and just mentioned it, and we both like the idea of just maybe a teeny bit extra, but once again guaranteeing that it's dedicated towards roads, but we were thinking the point six percent, am I dragging you into?
No, no, you're.
Yeah.
Well, no, 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 it, it won't, it'll just go towards the Roads Department, the, the point six percent, right?
That's what we're proposing.
Correct, that's what I'm thinking.
But we can't.
You can't designate it's gonna go towards residential streets or not, I understand.
No, no, I can designate that, I can't tell you in a future council action that they won't use that money for something else. That's what I can't tell you.
That's tough, cause I think we have to be able to guarantee the voters.
Again, I will tell you that we have, uh, this community has lived up to its commitment to spend the money where they said they were gonna spend the money. So, I mean.
Key, what are your thoughts? I mean, it was originally point five six.
So, I, I will just, I will just point out that when we, when, when we polled, the, when we did the polling, we hired a consultant to do the polling, one of the recommendations from the, from the consultant was to have the number be as specific as possible with a number that you could rely on, right? And that had legitimacy, so not, just don't go out and adopt a rounded-off number that sounds good, because that doesn't, that's not gonna play well with the community.
But the point six would, would, uh, make up for if we do the tiered.
Big-ticket option.
And, and that was probably the biggest people we had fighting it last time, were the car dealers and.
Right.
So if we took care of that, the point six explains why we went to point six.
And it.
Right. I, I, and I, I do like the tiered system, I brought that up twelve years ago.
Yep.
And I was told it would never work, but I see it working in Phoenix.
Yeah.
Cause I, I deal with some, um, some of the equipment we buy is out of Phoenix, and the first ten thousand, I pay the full rate, and then after that, it, it tiers down.
Yeah.
So.
So I know it works.
Yep.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, uh, along that lines, with the big-ticket option, um, you know, who are those retail, who are those people that pay sales tax that would fall into that category? You, you would do a dollar amount, so like builders, for instance, they're already getting.
It only falls with retail sales.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Perfect.
And like I said, there's no magic number as to where that tier is.
So.
It's all over the place.
If it came before council, we could decide what that tier looks like.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Absolutely.
But it sounds like we need to start acting quickly, because we need to vote on it by early July, like you stated.
We will have information for you in the upcoming June council meetings.
Okay.
That's a guarantee. If you wanna move forward, that's completely up to the council, but we will have information for you.
Okay.
That concludes our information that we had to present, thank you so much.
Well, it's earned.